From the city of Ketchikan and Cruise Line International Association for March 25th, 2024, please call the council members.
Got it on. Whistler?
Here.
Sorry. Blow everybody out. Gage?
Here.
Zingy? Flora?
Here.
Gas? Linnegan? Kifer?
Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to your help, which stands like a nation, and to its resolve, whether we do just have to walk.
Ketchikan City Council would like to respectfully acknowledge the traditional first people of this land in Ketchikan, the Tongas Clangan people. I thought we would first go around and do some introductions, and so everyone knows who all is here, so we'll start with you.
Yeah. Didn't need to use that. Well, my name is Mark Flora, with Carnival Corporation.
Loud up here. Help sauce.
Am I good?
Your fault.
Okay.
I was not, apparently.
Which also represents Holland America, Princess, Carnival, Seaborn, and Canard are the brands that we have at Ketchikan, as well as our Hap Operation motor coach tour tour operation, so it's great to be here.
Good afternoon, my name is Mark Flora, and I'm a member of Ketchikan City Council.
Hello, my name is Renee La Moje Reeve, and I am Vice President of Government and Community Relations for CLIA here in Alaska.
I'm Judy Zingy, and I'm a member of the City Council.
Hello, everyone, Lady Downs with CLIA Alaska.
Lollet Tissler, City Council.
Delilah Walsh, City of Ketchikan Manager.
Kim Stone, City of Ketchikan.
Lori Boisa, Tourism Manager for the City of Ketchikan.
Good afternoon, Ketchikan City Council.
Good afternoon, General Gage, City Council.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Sandy Weir with Norwegian Cruise Line Holdings, which includes Norwegian Cruise Line vessels, Regent and Oceana, and I look after government relations for the company and public affairs.
Riley Gas on the City Council.
Good afternoon, everyone, Preston Conahan with Royal Caribbean Group, which is Royal Caribbean International Celebrity Cruise Lines and Silver Sea. My colleague Wendy Linsky will also be joining us, who's in charge of government relations, and I look after the business and commercial side.
So a couple of folks, Jerry, so. My screen. You're in Dusha's office.
Hi, I'm Larry Kay, CLIA's General Counsel. Good to see everyone.
Hi, Beth Thibodeau, Government and Community Relations for Disney Cruise Line.
Hello, everybody, Jose Fernandez, Board Strategy for Disney Cruise Line.
Okay, we will now open it up to public comments. We have a very hard, we have to close at four o'clock today so folks can make planes, so we're going to be limiting everyone to three minutes. I appreciate that. Keep your comments fairly short. If you have more information for us, please send us the information, send it to the clerk, we'll get it. We're not making decisions today, so we can look at the information in the future, but in the meantime, keep your comments as brief as possible today. And first up, Mary Stevenson.
Good afternoon, Mary Stevenson, and tourism, since some of you were born. I'm going to save my three minutes. I'm in hopes that I hear something new that generates a question and that the mayor turns it back to the audience for comments, so I hope to have the ability to interact with the conversation today, make it a public vetting. Thank you much.
We don't have a little time for that, so it's up to you. Chris Parks.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Chris Parks, General Manager of Tongas Trading Company. I've been a resident of Ketchikan now for almost 26 years, and our business downtown is, if not the oldest, one of the oldest businesses in St. Alaska since 1898. I just wanted to come and support the cruise industry in Ketchikan and just relate to everybody how important it is to our local business community. We weathered no cruise ships for two years during the shutdown here a couple of years ago during the COVID crisis, and we survived a bit better than we thought we would, but if it'd been a long extended term, I don't know if we would be here, you know, after 125 years. You know, in our town, we have commercial fishing and we have tourism that are solely supported without government intervention or government support. Obviously, we have the Forest Service and the hospital and the shipyard. Those are all subsidized by government funds. The only ones, the only industries is really the cruise industry and the fishing industry that's somewhat, you know, independent of that, and I'm involved in both of those. We excel commercial fishing gear and supplies, and we also have a souvenir division where we do souvenirs, but our local business is very much supported and bolstered by the cruise industry in our town, and we just don't have a lot else. So I would hope that you guys in this room can get heads together and really make this a positive thing. I wince when I see things like the proposed limitations of cruise ships, like on the Fourth of July or that type of thing. I think most of our locals do support the cruise industry overall, and I think they know how important it is to our economy. I just want to relay from the business community how important it is. We're open year-round, and in the winter, there's nothing going on downtown, and the only reason why we are staying open in the winter is, one, to provide goods for the locals, and two, to keep those employees employed. We would make more money if we shut down for the winter. And I have 50, over 50 employees year-round, and we go to about 130 in the summer, so we're not the largest employer in town, but it's very important that I think everybody understand that, because there really is nothing else in our economy right now. There's no logging, there's no mining to speak of. You know, we have fishing, and fishing is up and down, and it's actually going to be struggling a little bit this year, the prices are down on the commercial fishing industry. So I think you all take that to heart about how important it is for our community, and thank you very much.
Jamie.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, and also I want to say thank you to industry reps who showed up and are here for a collaborative communication and meeting, because, you know, it's really hard whenever you hear about all the regional happenings in southeast. I'm sure it's tough to come to tables like this with fear of unknown of how it's going to go, or what rhetoric are you going to be met with, but I'm happily representing myself, I needed to say that. I serve on the Borough Assembly, but I am representing myself and the businesses that I am in charge of, and I'm a product of tourism in southeast and happily live in this community because of tourism. Lori Boisa happened to hire me in 2009 to work for Alan Rain Tours as a tour rep, and then I worked myself up to be the Vice President of the company, and saw the land of opportunity. So my husband and I opened a business on Creek Street because of tourism. I continue to see opportunity abound for locals. The 18-year-olds coming straight out of high school have work immediately. If they want to work in the industry, we welcome them. They can quickly climb up the ladder here and have opportunities to create new businesses and be entrepreneurs, because there is so much ability to do so, and to spread out tourism across this island, not just our tiny city blocks. So I think it's a great conversation to be had here, and I'm really looking forward to listening and leaning in and hearing how we can balance this out for the community residents who think that tourism doesn't impact their lives, but it very much does. We have a lot of ways that we know rates are cheaper, because we have this influx of people for six months, that we can tolerate anything for six months. We tolerate the state road construction, we do all the windows of things that happen in six months in Alaska because of seasonality. So six months, we endure an influx of happy people who want to see our backyard and experience it, and we get to highlight that for them and share the joy and give these bucket list experiences. I'm all for it. I've got 6 million other ideas for businesses in my head, I just don't have the money, but I see the opportunity all the time, but I'm very, very happy to see this here come together, so, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Michelle.
Good afternoon, my name is Michelle O'Brien, I'm the Executive Director of the Greater Ketchikan Chamber of Commerce, and in the absence of timber, with the volatility of fishing, as we all know, is struggling right now, it's no secret that tourism is our number one economic driver, and your chamber is strongly in support of cruise and tourism as being that economic driver. Sure, there's tons of ideas that people have about diversifying our economy, but the fact of the matter is, it's a myth that you think that that might happen tomorrow or next year, or maybe even five years from now. I will tell you that nine out of 10 of the businesses that we talk to, and we talk to them all daily, will say exactly what these folks have said before. The reason that they can stay open in the winter and serve our locals is due to a strong tourism economy. We are strongly in favor of this, and we would urge these two groups to come together to create a mutually beneficial relationship for a long and positive future for Ketchikan. Thank you.
Kim Stone.
Hello, thanks for everybody coming here today and helping us with our tourism programs. I'm with Adventure Ketchikan Tours and the Thomas Family. We have three tours that we run here in Ketchikan, and we're 100% tourism, and we run three fishing lodges, which I feel like is a kind of a tourism thing. I've been involved in tourism since the early 80s, I'm dating myself, but I think it's gotten bigger and bigger and big, and with the fishing and the logging and everything else, we don't have a lot of places to go right now. I agree with Michelle on that, you know, there just isn't a lot of places to go, so the big push on economics is, would be the tourism, so we're 100% for it.
Come on, gentlemen.
Good afternoon. I don't know if I can adjust that, but, okay, that was actually really easy, thank you. My name is Kara Tetley, I'm the Executive Director for the Ketchikan Visitors Bureau, and I was excited to hear about this meeting, and yesterday I was in a conversation and reminded that oftentimes we forget to say thank you in situations like this, and so that's all I'm going to do, is just shower all of you guys with gratitude here. So I wanted to say first to the city staff, thank you for seeing the importance of this meeting, excuse me, and working hard to prepare to make this successful, a successful conversation today. It isn't easy, but definitely appreciate the dedication to addressing these community needs, so thank you guys for getting here. Secondly, to the City Council, thank you guys for being here as well. You guys are elected into these roles by members of the community, and you've been listening to what the community is saying and recognizing that the concerns around the cruise tourism are valid, and I appreciate you listening to all sides of this conversation and for approaching these concerns with the same thoughtfulness and integrity that I have come to recognize from the members of this community since I have been here in a little less than a year. Overall, the kindness and the warmth and friendliness, I think, of the Ketchikanites spreads. I've been going to some trade shows on behalf of Ketchikan this winter, and I wish I would have taken the tick marks of how many people came up to me and said how Ketchikan is their favorite community on their cruise stops, and it is because of the community members and the kindness that they receive and the warmth, and I just think that's really special, because this is a great state with a lot of opportunities, and so I love hearing that Ketchikan is their favorite spot. And I know that there's a little bit of controversy around my coming from Juneau, so I just want to throw out there, I never had that happen to me when I was doing this in the opportunities, so I just was, it was unexpected, and it was very welcome. And then, of course, to the cruise industry leaders, thank you for making this trip. Some of you guys are neighbors in below Loscans and raise your families here, and I think that that shared knowledge is of the challenges and benefits of living in a state where so many communities rely on tourism, but still want that wildness. I think that it's really helpful to be talking to our neighbors and having that same type of concern and compassion. So you're also, as the industry, your contributions have not only boosted our economy, but also brought joy and opportunity to our shores, from supporting local businesses, fostering a vibrant tourism scene, charitable initiatives, and then the environmental stewardship that I have come to learn about. So I appreciate you coming here today to talk about also the other side of those effects. So to all of you guys, thank you for your willingness to engage in this dialogue, to understand one another and work towards solutions that benefit everyone.
I'm sorry, Kara, we have to stop you.
That was my three minutes?
Yep.
No, that was pretty much it, one sentence. Thank you.
Thank you. Danielle, you also signed up to speak. Daniel Kelly? Yeah. Your name is next to this. I didn't think so. Danielle's the media, by the way, so.
What's your?
Yeah, let's just share, share a few thoughts here. Let's see. Okay. That's all who signed up, who want to address us. Come on.
Hi, everyone, my name's Adriana Oliva Parks, and I'm here on behalf of Cape Fox Corporation and its subsidiaries here in Ketchikan. So I do have a press statement just to share with you. Our business enterprises situated in the regions of the city of Ketchikan, city of Saksman, and Ketchikan Gateway Borough have been engaged in a collaborative effort with CLIA and other members of the community to foster the growth and development of the local tourism industry. Our approach to partnership is characterized by close coordination and a shared commitment to providing our community members, shareholders, and other stakeholders with opportunities to secure gainful employment and contribute to the expansion of the tourism sector. We acknowledge the significance of demonstrating respect for the area's history, land, and indigenous people who have inhabited the region, sorry, for generations. As an Alaska Native corporation, we endeavor to collaborate with partners who share our vision of integrating the magnificence of the past with innovative ideas of the present to thrive in a future that has cultural significance and goes beyond. Our business enterprises remain committed to the continued development of the tourism industry, and we are pleased to have the support of our partners and community members in achieving our shared objectives. And that's it.
Thank you. See who wants to address us. Come on.
John Benclay from Ward Cove Dock Group, and I hadn't planned on speaking this afternoon, but I was inspired by Kara with one word that she mentioned, which is gratitude. And Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you. Thank you for providing this forum, for really reaching out to the industry to have a discussion about how this community can move forward, and to the industry as well. Express my gratitude and thanks. My family started in the tour business in 1950, up in Fairbanks with a small riverboat excursion, and I joined the company in 1953 and have been with them ever since, working in the family business, and I've seen firsthand, really, the tourism industry in the 1950s, the 1960s, the 70s, and as it started to grow in the 80s and 90s, and now 2000s, as cruise ships and more visitors started to come to Alaska. And I can testify about the thousands of people that have worked in our family business over, what, almost 80 years, and the, how meaningful that is in their growth as individuals. I think Jamie mentioned that opportunities for young people, high school students, college students, to start in this visitor industry, where they learn to engage with adults, to present, to really come into their own and to find themselves in the industry and then go on in their business. We've had now mayors, legislators, Lieutenant Governor Valerie Davidson, many people who have gone on to do great things in Alaska, worked with our family in their younger formative years, so it's a great opportunity, and I'm so appreciative of the industry, and the opportunity has given my family and the thousands of people over the years that we've employed. So thank you to the council, to industry for pulling this together and seeing how we can move forward. Challenges, no question about it, but I think collaboratively, we can address those challenges. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anyone else want to address the assemblage today? Seeing everyone close, persons to be heard, and we'll get on to our agenda. First, I would like to make a few remarks, then we'll have, we're going to make some remarks, and then we're going to get into it. Oh, he's. Wasn't sure exactly what was down there. He was rushing the boat around. So from the city of Ketchikan's standpoint, I think we would like to emphasize that there are basically three issues we wanted to discuss, at least get the conversation going today as we go forward, too short-term, not short-term, too vastly short-term and no longer term. And certainly, those issues are, the first one, of course, is what we've talked about, been talking about for several years now, is the need for this capital protection. And we're at the stage now, I think we understand, but it's going to be a fairly expensive process, it needs to be done, the docks, absolutely, to be totally honest, we're going to be at the end of our financial ability to pay for that. And I guess we would like to reach out to the industry and say, where are some of your ideas? You know, we're probably going to go to the state, we're going to the feds, but our investment is $25 million, we're having room, but it's going to be out there. We'll just have the ability to bond for that in the future. So we're going to, so let's bring that on the table and see what some of your ideas, because we'd like to work with the industry in a cooperative manner to figure out some way to resolve this, because we can't do this one on our own. The other, you know, concern, also in the short-term, is the promenade, because we all knew of some issues with the promenade this last year, and it comes down to working with the industry once again, to come up with some possible solutions for that going into the future. From our standpoint, one of the issues with the promenade is the use of bow thrusters, and no, I'm not saying you can't use bow thrusters. We get that, we don't got the tugs, we understand that, but is there somewhere that we can work together to minimize the damage on the promenade and other port facilities going forward that works for both of us in the future? So that's the second one. The third one is a little more long-term, hopefully it resolves in a few months. We've been talking now for a couple of years with the industry, and also amongst ourselves, can the city of Ketchikan come to a grid with cruise lines similar to the one Juneau has? And hopefully, before we leave today, I want to get the general consensus, that's where we're going, we're going to make steps, who meets with me, who comes to us, who presents proposals, what we need, before we leave today, we really have that going, because I think that's the crucial one, because that decides how we can use passenger and vessel tax monies. And if we know what we can, and you know what we can, and we're all good on that, we don't need to be having discussions around, you know, talking about, does this fit, does that fit, is this good or bad? And from talking to my friends and neighbors, for the most part, this is working off, we don't have to be in that situation, and we need to start that process now. And, great.
Thank you. I have some good news already, we have a shared goal. Mr. Mayor and City Council members, thank you so much for the invitation to be here today, Lori and Delilah for putting this together in quite quick fashion and getting us all around the table. We're very much looking forward to a productive dialogue and advancing the priorities that we all support for the city, its residents, and the visitor experience. As the 2024 season nears and looking at both the short and long term, we want to actively work together to advance our mutual priorities that we know exist and we're hoping to identify around this table today. For our part, the two things we're looking for is, how would you, as City Council, as the mayor, as Ketchikan, how would you like to work with industry? Going forward, what can all parties do to positively shape our relationship and make sure that it continues to be productive and that we are able to work together to advance the things that matter to us all? And secondly, we want to develop the same framework that you're discussing regarding the use of passenger fees. You know, it may not look the same as Juneau, and that's okay, but I think that you're right, getting everybody around the table, having a framework in place that we live by, that exists long after everyone at this table is gone, I think is going to be the most productive way, and, you know, we want to have a process for discussing and moving those projects forward. So again, thank you, we are all happy to be here, happy to have made it happen in quite a short period of time and get people from Canada and Seattle and California all at the table to have a great conversation today, and our friends online, I don't want to forget Team Disney. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have eight point points here on the list that we all kind of looked at, and I guess what I want to add, so that we can get through all this in reasonable, because basically, four o'clock is the drop dead point. So I'm going to try to hold each of these discussions to 15, 20, 40 stops, so make sure we get to all of them, so is that. So first up, we have CPV, the use of CPV or wharfage fees, to infrastructure and city infrastructure impacted by cruise tourists. Do you want to give us a bit of a CPV?
So I think I will be calling on CLIA's counsel, Larry Kay, who is online to be doing that, but yes, thank you so much.
Thank you, Renee, and hello, everyone. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, thank you very much for having us and hosting us. Before I talk about the legal principles involved in CPV funding, I want to mention that we too are looking for the type of framework and collaboration that we've established in Juneau. It didn't start out that way. It was a contentious situation, we ended up going to litigation, but out of the litigation came a new resolved sense of purpose with regard to fees and the need for collaboration along the way, the need for discussing individual projects that may be in the gray area, and the cruise industry has a long history of working with ports around the country and around the world on funding for projects that may not be squarely within the legal parameters, but are beneficial to the local community and the people that we serve, our passengers and their experience. So I hope you all keep that in mind as I discuss the legal restrictions on the use of fees. There are two sources of those restrictions. The first one is the U.S. Constitution itself. Article 1, Section 10, Clause 3 is referred to as the tonnage clause, and the tonnage clause simply says that a non-federal interest, such as a state or municipality, cannot assess fees against vessels for the pleasure of coming to their port. The fees have to be related to a service that is provided to the vessel itself, to its marine operations. So when we talk about things that benefit municipal infrastructure, transit issues, road repairs, beautification projects, those are generally funded out of municipal general funding, not from passenger fees. It has to represent a service to a vessel, such as catbotic protection, security, fire protection, dockage maintenance and repair, cleaning, and so forth, things that aid the use of the docks by the ships and that aid their marine operation. The tonnage clause has been around for as long as the Republic and has been repeatedly affirmed by the Supreme Court, but in 2002, Congress also passed a federal statute that codified all of the case law from the Supreme Court and the circuits on the use of passenger fees, and it's found in Title 33 of the United States Code, Section 5B, and that's a statute that simply says, once again, fees levied against vessels engaged in interstate or foreign commerce have to be related to services provided solely to the vessels that pay the fees. They have to be proportionate to the costs actually incurred, and they have to place no more than a minimal burden on interstate commerce. Now again, these rules were designed when the Republic was formed and the federal statute grew out of all the case law over the years on this issue, but they're, they can be quite restrictive, and we have a history of working with ports on those restrictions and finding ways to agree to fund projects that, as I said before, benefit the community, benefit the cruise lines, help with passenger issues, even though they may not strictly be permissible under the, under the legal restrictions I've outlined, and we very much hope to have that type of collaboration with Ketchikan and with you all in the future and establish that framework that we have in Juneau for. with you all in the future and establish that framework that we have in Juno for collaborative, cooperative working alongside by side to strike the right balance between what's permissible and what's appropriate to spend the passenger fees. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, any questions for? Did you have any follow up on that, Renee? I guess I'll take a second to ask the, what she, part of this also was some of the city infrastructure issues of things that are indeed affected by the cruise industry. And so if she wants to touch on that real briefly.
Yep, thank you. One of the questions that came up during council was, what about the impact to overall city infrastructure? So in other words, to move the tourists and cruise passengers throughout the city, there is an impact of increasing that population, whether it be in public restrooms or even sewer lines, water lines, delivery of service. I know we'll talk about shore power later, that's another one that, that the entire city's infrastructure is impacted, but what's? And perhaps this is something we come to in our agreement when we acknowledge these types of infrastructure items are allowable based on those cruise passenger impacts. And I don't know if you can clarify for us, or if that's a possibility?
Is there a question to me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I think the types of expenses that you're describing fall squarely in the gray area, right? They're not, they're not definitively a service to the vessel, but they're good for our passengers, they're good for the city. And those are the areas where, under the framework in Juno, we sit down and discuss individual projects, costs and financing, how passenger fees might be used for some of those projects. But generally, the law says that municipal infrastructure has to be funded by general municipal funds, not by fin funds levied against the vessels that call there. Because then that would be creating a situation where cruise passengers bear the expense of municipal infrastructure for every port they visit, which is untenable in the cruise industry. There's only so much that we can tax our passengers. And they too can challenge the use of fees. They're the ones paying the fees. So we always have to be mindful of class actions and claims by passengers that the fees are not being used for the types of purposes that are allowable under the Constitution. I know that's not a square and direct answer, but it's the most honest answer I can give.
Before that, if I could ask anybody, if you have a question, if you could turn your name this way, so the mayor can see if you've got, in order to call on you, just makes it easier with such a, a big group. Thank you.
Councilman Regent.
Yeah, before we get started, I'd like us all to agree that I understand that tonnage clause, but I'd like everybody in this room to understand that that is a 250-year-old law. And I'd like to know if everyone's in agreement that when they need that, growing during the Republic, they were talking about vessels with materials, not vessels of thousands of people that impact our infrastructure. I think one of my biggest issues with this whole thing is the fact that when the tonnage law was written, they were bringing in materials and goods, not people, not millions of people. People impact our infrastructure, they use our toilets, they use our roads. There are 14,000 people on this island that this infrastructure was built for. It was not designed for 1.5 million people a day or a year. It's not designed for 2.5 million people. It's designed for a small community. Now, I do know that in the Caribbean, that the, there is tonnage laws and information that those fees help support that, those communities, and they're, I mean, they're considered a third world country. When I went to Jamaica, I paid $175 that went into their infrastructure. I had no problems with that. And so I'm just going to leave it at this, is that I get the tonnage law, but I also think it's important that everyone in this room understand, we're not talking about goods coming into this community. We're talking about millions of people who impact our infrastructure. Water, sewer, garbage, roads, half our roads are bridges. And this community should not have to, the backs of the community should not have to fork out money to pay for a bond, to pay for a dock that the only thing they get to do is walk on it.
Mr. Mayor, panelists, I would like to mention, perhaps as we come to an agreement under this framework, that we also consider structuring of rate design in the city of Ketchikan. Is there something we can do to capture that revenue during the tourist season that impacts our infrastructure? I don't have that answer, so don't ask me what I'm talking about. I don't have a solution yet, I have to ask somebody smarter than me, I have a few people in mind. But perhaps it is something that we look into, and I really appreciate hearing the comment that that is a gray area, and that's obviously something we can discuss and include in what we agree is a acceptable use of that gray area.
Other port, other priority for projects, these are obviously some of them, I'm sorry, someone run a little bit? I guess. Um, we are actually, I'm, I'm, we're going to have a quick discussion at this point about the promenade or cathodic protection, because we all kind of know what the issues are there, but it is something that we're going to be discussing with you guys. Once again, if you have any ideas of ways that we can, you know, get through this situation without our taxpayers with, you know, 25 or 30 million dollars additional bonds, we would love to hear it. Because we think we're kind of at the end of that, and, and we're not saying you have to pay for everything, but you might have some good ideas we can use to move ahead on this, on both of those. One we didn't talk about was upland development. Did you want to address that, Senator?
I, I don't have any specific projects, but we do know that there's need in the upland in order to, and we've got plenty of plants. We've done lots of studies, we've got plenty of upland plans, they're old, they're probably outdated, and perhaps not even applicable in some areas. But we know we have challenges regarding our road development, staging areas, traffic management, safety and security. The council's been very clear that we want to ensure we've got ADA accessible, our entire city, not just the port, not just sort of city buildings, but that our entire city is accessible. That's one of the core values is accessibility with our council. So what I'd like to hear from industry is, if we, if we talk in the sense of, of this framework, using that as our guiding thought, what are the options for us to move forward? What's the best way for us to approach these kinds of items?
I'm, I was, I was. I saw eyes going back here, so I was, I'm, I'm, I'm waiting here. Okay.
No, thank you, Mayor Kuyfer. I, I'm going to start by addressing the broader framework in this meeting and say that, you know, the, the first two items here for the promenade, the cathodic protection, you know, I'm optimistic hearing that, that's certainly something that we as an industry have expressed support for, and finding ways to fund this type of work, you know, on the dock, on the promenade. And so I, I just wanted to express that at the beginning, it's a great starting point. And then, you know, with the third item being, you know, a framework, I think one thing that I will express, coming from down south, as you say, from Seattle, is that certainly Ketchikan will have its own solution. I think we refer to a Juno solution because that's what's in existence today. Certainly, there will be a solution that is specific to Ketchikan and that meets the needs of Ketchikan. You know, as I think and hear about the uplands development, you know, really, what I, one of the things that I go towards is, all of our guests are looking for great destination experiences, Ketchikan provides that today. And so we're certainly interested, motivated to ensure that that is, is the experience that continues in Ketchikan through the projects that we take on with you. So, thank you.
Robert, I don't know if you could kind of walk us through what possible solutions there are?
I, I was going to ask, ask a question maybe a little better, start a conversation around the cathodic protection, just as an example, right? Let's just assume the 25 million ish is the number, it may change. Is that, just for clarity, are we, is the question whether or not that that's an appropriate use of the fees and that we're? That's what we're asking here?
Really, we, we know it's, let's say it is 25 million. If we wanted to get this all done in one fell swoop rather than over time, based on current revenues, are there solutions, as the mayor mentioned, we can't issue a $25 million bond today? Is there another partnership or another source or another structure in which we could get those done a little faster?
Yeah, have you, so the revenue you raised today off of the dockage, the head tax, the CPV and the port development fee, I don't know how your budgeting process works, but if you, if you sort of laid that out to say, well, here's how, what we have today and what can we get done, you know, maybe it's phased over two years or three years or something along those lines? Or is that work that needs to happen once there's alignment on, yeah, that's an appropriate use of, of fees and we, we agree that's a top priority and move forward on it?
We're comfortable that it's an appropriate use, and that is exactly how we do our budgeting. We look at operations first, what does it take and what does it cost? You know, we look at our revenue lines, what does it take to operate? And then from there, we start to pick out our CIP. And so we know that our capital needs are greater than the current revenue structure. So we can't achieve everything, and that's with the entire city. We, if we had an extra $200 million, we could get everything done, that's on our list, but that's not realistic in any part of the city. And so that's sort of where this conversation is, if there's any other options, suggestions, partnerships that we could be exploring.
It would take us far too long to raise that money, just off the CPV funds, even if we use them really, to do that project, we would have to expense a lot of money on the docks. So that's what we're kind of saying, I, I think from my perspective, that's, that was probably a good area, because it's the dock.
Yeah, nexus vessels.
The dock, the way. That said though, there's almost no, we could just dump that all off on, we're going to do CPV funding for that, because it would take too many years to go with the money. Where, I, I, I'm at the critical stage now, we're starting to get there, we've been talking about this for 10 years. You know, it's 10 years.
Yeah, also the promenade project, right? Which, does that have an estimate on it yet? And it's kind of the same question of just, I assume the urgency on that is?
Craig, I don't know, do we have an estimate on the promenade?
Not a little?
Not a little?
So I, I would estimate, just on the basics of what we know, it's going to be at least 5 million.
And that's also a two-part issue too, as well, before, because we can't just repair it, and if there's something causing it to fall apart again, we can't just repair it and then five years later say, we're going to repair it again. We need to figure out what the long-term solution is.
Yeah, that was my, kind of my next follow-up on that, because I think I've heard that it's presumed that it's from bow thrusters, I don't know if that's been studied or there's any engineering behind that, because I wouldn't want to fix it and then 10 years down the road be fixing it again. And, and if we need to make operational changes, so there's been no direction to the fleets that I'm aware of, to change our current operational practices there, because there's been no, there's been no communication to them that, you know, this is an issue. So we, I think we can do some more work on that, but in the near term, we would say, well, let's first, what can we do now to stop making the problem happen? And then what's a more permanent solution if that in fact is, you know, the source of it?
And you're absolutely correct. On the report that we got back from our engineering firm when we initially inspected the promenade, it is assumed that the only way we could have lost that much overburden was because of the thrusters. That was just, but it's not a full engineering study, we didn't engage with that. It was enough to say, is the promenade safe for people to be walking on? And what do we need to do to make, make sure it's taken care of? And so that's where, where we limited our study, and the assumption was that it was the thrusters. But that is a, you're absolutely correct. And so it's something we do have to fix, and you're right, if we have to do a full engineering study to determine the source or the damage, that that would be the what next?
But for the purpose of conversation, five, six million is a good number for us to just have at least as a, a place to start, it sounds like, from, based on what, what the folks in the harbor have shared, so. So one, which I don't know if, has been explored, one path is, well, there's several. So there's, there's federal grant money, and there's a lot of it available right now in ports. I don't know if you've, you know, pursued any of those options, I know I've sent some things to you, but.
And, and we have, unfortunately, most of the federal money is designated for shipping ports where goods are coming through. And, and if it, and we're solely a cruise port, which is very unusual, I'm finding, I didn't know that, that we're solely a cruise port. And so that has disqualified us for quite a bit. I know we're, our team is working with other grant writers to explore other options and appreciate the share of that information, but that's sort of, we're in a weird exception because of that.
Yeah, you're right. So our, our study of all the different programs out there is, is similar, a lot of them have a goods movement requirement, which doesn't really work for the cruise sector. PID, the PIDP program, which is a, from, from USDOT, the MARAT, which is the maritime division, the PIDP was modified to not have the goods movement process, which then makes crews eligible. So we've helped some other ports apply for shore power projects, for example, under PIDP. So we, Carnival has a consultant who's the former MARAT administrator, the guy who used to give the grants, and we've offered other ports as well. As Ketchikan, we were happy to have him engage with your, normally you have a grant writer or a team, and at least scrub all the available known opportunities. Department of, or the EPA has a couple of maritime programs, a lot of them have a nexus now to decarbonization, so that sometimes works, works for shore power, may not work for cathitization. But anyways, just, just as a resource, happy to, to utilize him, he's helping community Juno right now with a, with a grant application for their shore power and a few other communities. The other is state CPV funds, you know, you can apply for projects to the allocation that sits at the state. I don't know if that path has been pursued, but this is certainly a worthy couple of projects that I think would be a compelling case, because it's tied directly to this, the industry and CPV versus some of the, the things that maybe come across their transom.
Well, we've applied in the past, we've gotten some, we've done some others. I mean, the state tends to treat that as, we've got this small pocket and all you want this and we're not going to have it. So it's kind of, it's, it's, it's been a challenge, plus we also have to deal with occasional state budgets, but non-port communities are port communities.
Yeah.
Yes, Councilman Regent.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was in 2016, that last study we did for the methodics to fix the, the infrastructure of our docks, was 45 million.
That's not.
I didn't pull it out. Wasn't it 40, wasn't the study?
I mean, the last one, but, I was 25, but I, it's, it's at least six or seven years old too, so.
Yeah, so triple it.
So we're, we're passing all of our costs go through the roof since then, so. And we won't move a shirt until we actually sit down.
So, no, the question I have though, is, because we're all like waiting for someone to answer, I guess. My, my question would be, manager, whoever, is how much does this community need to raise its port, the head tax or whatever fee, in order to raise enough money to secure our port system in order for these cruise lines to come in? If we were to raise it? If we were to raise it, I want, I just want this on the table, that everybody understand that if, if we were to raise it today, this is how much we would have to raise in order to meet the ability to keep that port viable.
Because we've never as a city done a full actual rate study for the port. I don't have the answer today. We finished half the rate study, which includes comparing prices to other ports. But of course, that's just for information, it's not for use by the city of Ketchikan. The next part is where PND has actually sent us their draft report, or what are the critical needs of the port of Ketchikan? So that's your two-part, just like we talked about, in order to establish your revenue requirement and set those rates, you have to know what's operational costs, what is our CIP costs and what is our depreciation costs? And what I mean by depreciation costs, and I apologize to the councilors, I know you guys all heard this during our rate-setting work session, but essentially that is, as our assets depreciate, are we raising enough revenue to replace those? So when they reach full depreciation or useful life, do we have enough in the capital funds to replace and continue that replacement? And then enough to meet our CIP needs as well as operational needs and interest costs and, and rising inflation and whatnot? So that's part of our, our rate study process. We do have a new rate engine coming up. We've finished programming out water, we've got to make some tweaks, we've almost done with electric. The next one, I believe, is wastewater and then the port. So we've got them sort of in an order of how we're doing the rate engine. That will spit out to us, this is what your actual cost need is. Today, we don't, we don't have that projection because we've not done a proper revenue requirement study. But we are getting to that point and we will be able to say demonstratively, this is the revenue requirement to meet all the infrastructure and operational needs of the port of Ketchikan. But I don't have that number today because we've not ever done that. We've just said, this is our budget, this is how much money we need, let's raise rates. And so we, we really need to go into that process where we're looking at infrastructure replacement. I can't even tell you if it's sufficient. If today's revenues are sufficient, I can only tell you we're not using our reserves. So obviously it's not insufficient, but are we neglecting infrastructure? I, I can't give that answer yet.
So we should come into our next section for wharfage fees, use of funds. I'm sorry. Oh, sorry, go, go, go.
Thank you, your honor. And before you jump into the next section, I actually wanted to, if you're afraid of jumping around a bit, I wanted to fold one of the future bullet points into the current conversation because I think it's related in part because of something that Mr. Morganstern said, and that's about the use of thrusters to leave the port. And, and on Mr. Morganstern, you'd said that there'd been no real communication about whether there needs to be an operational change there. But because those, in the absence of a study, there's an assumption that perhaps bow thrusters are part of the issues that we're seeing down there. If anybody could address the realities of an operational change that might diminish the amount of pressure we're seeing on the overburden along those pilings there, I just, I think it connects to this larger conversation about the physical condition of the port. So mayor, forgive me for jumping ahead, I just thought I'd fold it in here. Yeah, so I, I'll try to answer it, it's a great point. I mean, we'll presume that that's the cause, we should take action now, right? Because there's no harm not to take action. So I think we talked about a little bit with Claude, how we can just get communication out to all the vessels, captains, et cetera. Here, it's perfect time, we're getting ready to ramp up the season. And what is in the yard are they doable now in terms of, you know, getting off the dock? And is there anything you can do to mitigate the, the, the pressure from the thrusters? And if there's anything operation we can do right now, for sure?
That, that is a conversation we can have with Clea outside of this meeting, coming up with those solutions. And, and even if we implement something this season, as, as you mentioned, to, to give it a try and what are we seeing and what are the results?
That seems reasonable. Yes, go upstairs.
Just kind of listen to everybody and try to, you know, there's a lot of questions and I'm pretty simple fast and give them. Before we move on from this issue, me, what it boils down to is, is a fair criticism to say, well, you've got to be in charge of these fees over the last however many years. It's up to you to use that money to maintain and run your port. And if it's, you guys are full line on the maintenance, that's on you. That's a fair criticism. I just think that, to answer some of the questions that come back and forth, correct me if I'm wrong, but basically we are asking for some sort of monetary contribution outside of what we currently have. And the reason being that it's just, we own the port, we're responsible for the, for the maintenance. But I think everyone acknowledges that you guys, in order to in your ships here and do your business here, are also in need of, that to be an operating, properly maintained facility. And our concern is that we're getting to the point at which we don't address money that we don't have right now. Eventually it's gonna fail for all of us. So forgive me if I'm being too simplistic, but I think what we're really asking is.
I love it.
Telling us what grants are good to apply for, then being great, but at the end of the day, I think what is.
It's not. But we also understand you guys are under constraints too, you know, so.
And I think the situation that we're in is now that they, now that they ask us on the table. I mean, that's not something that we are prepared to probably talk about today. I think knowing, knowing that that's what's out there is something that we have to go back and discuss. And certainly, you know, as Clea, we tend to be the convening party that brings all of our member lines together. But, you know, those are questions that go to the highest levels of companies. But appreciate, appreciate your frankness.
No, at this point, even if we're asking money, we're not sure how much and where we're still, you know, and so that's, yeah.
That's what I, I was just gonna add that, that our city manager here is keeping us in check. Delilah keeps saying that, you know, we really need that full study to be done and it hasn't been done. So I think that we're all looking for, you know, what's collected today? What do you, what, what that future is with inflation, with, you know, with the guest counts that we're gonna see? How, you know, when the season's gonna run, how much we can collect? That's a really big exercise that she and, and the city that you're undertaking, but absolutely needs to be part of this conversation. So it's kind of like, we don't want to jump ahead too much with how much do we need? It all has to go in that pot, it all has to be analyzed. And I thank you for saying that you're doing that because I think that's what we need to move forward. And then we can come together in the fall. I don't know how long it's gonna take you to get there, because it is. Yeah, sure. Yeah, it's a huge study and we're, but, but it, it's absolutely necessary. And then once that exercise is done, it's really important to keep it refreshed too, so that we don't get into this, so, so we're not here again in, in three years and what changes have to be made, have to be made. And, but we love that it, it also, once you put everything in, it should be a collaborative discussion to see what we can do. And if we can get behind you with the state, I know that Renee has some contacts at that level and is willing to use them and, and kind of be a second voice and a second push for the industry because they do collect that money, the, the state portion of the CPV funds. And this would be a very direct way of spending it. So we'd love to, Renee would love to engage with them, I'm sure. And help it all, yeah, and help it along, help those conversations along, we'll go back to back for you.
Yep.
So next, I actually was wharfage fees, use of funds, you've kind of touched on that. Do you want to touch on the other gray ones on there?
Yeah, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, this topic actually came up at our council meeting when we were considering, are we charging enough in wharfage? And, you know, in lieu of a study and doing the full revenue analysis, revenue requirement analysis, we don't have the full answer yet. We will, once we understand our capital and our, our depreciation and, and load that data. And I will tell you that the rate engine we're investing in, rather than hiring six consultants every year, we invested in software. So it does update every time we load our financial statements for the fiscal year, all that data will automatically update. So actually, Robert or anybody else on your team, if you would like to explain, and, and for the, the public's information, the wharfage fees is what we call the head tax. That's what the city collects per passenger. And so that money is collected for the port fund and that's where it goes. Right now, I think it's $11 a head when you come to the, the port of Ketchikan. I think it's $8 if you're lighted out, I don't quote me on that. But Robert, I don't know if you or anybody else want to explain how you experienced that throughout Alaska? Is it, we, we've seen studies, our own rate studies showing what it is in different areas. I think the, in this discussion, it's important to note, I know it's Scadway that has the, the really large assessment, but it's a very limited largest assessment in order to deal with the landslide. So it's an agreement between the lines and the city to say, yes, we know we're gonna have a large head tax assessment, but we have a major infrastructure problem we need to deal with in a very short time period in order to make this all viable for everyone. So I don't know if you want to expand a little bit on what it looks like in Alaska? I know you and I have had discussions about how expensive Alaska is per head. But it may not be something any of us really know because we only know what it impacts Ketchikan and that's really, that's important to me, but, but it is a bigger discussion.
Yeah, yeah, Alaska, when you add it up across the board, is I think the most heavily taxed destination that we sail in anywhere. And in part, that's because the CPV sits on top of all the local fees that are paid. The home ports are also rather expensive home ports as well. So the fees vary when you look across the world of ports in terms of the way that they're structured and, but yeah, it's, it, it's, it's an expensive destination. And again, it's the guest who pays that, right? It's the guest who pays that in their, what's called TF and PE, when they spend their money on their crews and, which is what we talked about earlier with the, the conversation with Larry. In the case of this Scadway example, yeah, the, some of you may be aware, there's a landslide issue there that is unfortunately located above a dock. And, and in order to, when there was a slide a couple summers ago that, that actually hit the dock and, and so the sort of emergency mitigations need to be made in order to continue to be able to operate. And albeit, we're operating in a very modified fashion, nobody walks on that dock. We came to an agreement with the city on a temporary fee that can be collected, that can be used and directed towards the remediation efforts there. And so that was not taken lightly because our experience has been anywhere in the world, when you add a fee, it never goes away. So I think that's a consideration that's, 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 needs to be just being real, is there may be, you know, ideas around a temporary fee or a fee for a specific project, but they, they would need to be time limited because otherwise they just become part of the backdrop of, of general fund fees.
Is that something that would be a possibility or something we should reference when we come to this framework agreement? And what I mean by that, I think it was councillor Zangy asked, what can we do to ensure that our, our rates are dynamic? That we are responding to the impact to our infrastructure or the demand or something else like a landslide that could come up? Is there some sort of agreement or formulation we can use related to that revenue requirement?
Well, please don't have any landslides. But yeah, I think, I think, speaking for, I'm not speaking for everybody, just speaking for me and my corporation, I think when we have this conversation about fees and priorities on the waterfront, generally, if we understand how the money's going to be used and we agree it's a good idea, I think we can figure something out. And it is, it is, which means there needs to be a degree of openness in both directions, right? So we need to sit down and say, what's the budget? Where is all the fees that are being currently collected from the different revenue streams going to now? And I know you've got other operating expenses, all that stuff. So we're not naive about what it takes to run a port and all the services around it. But, but in order for us to fill, I think, a place where it makes sense and that we're comfortable and potentially time limited on something, then yeah, then I think it's doable. In the MOAs that we've had with Juno that are unrelated to fees specifically, but more around other operating issues, the reason why they've worked is that we sat at the table and everybody held their nose and, you know, not everybody comes away happy, that means it's probably a good deal and compromise. And an important bit is there has to be a willingness to be transparent and open about, about hard things like, like fees and money. Alaska is an amazing destination, it's been a premium destination for years. And we'd like it to stay that way. And part of our dialogue with communities is around making sure that we continue to be this is a place where the cruise lines want to send their best ships, who get their highest paying customers that want to come to Alaska year after year. And this fits into that broader conversation as well.
So I think perhaps when we get through this, we have some parameters or definitions on the revenue requirement when we talk about infrastructure and, and capital improvement.
Short bar.
Yay.
Yes, we like it.
Actually, Robert, if you're telling, why, you know, what, with that whole reasoning is because, and, and the reason I, I ask you to explain why is because to us, our priority is to provide power to the rate payers and our rate base that's here in Ketchikan today. So we want to meet the needs of our businesses, our citizens, our residents. Whereas shore power could or could not do that. And so if you could speak to a little bit, and I would like Jeremy to actually come up and, and speak to it. We'll give you a, a microphone, you can flip out with Lori in a minute, but not flip out with Lori. But if you can kind of explain your, your, why it's important, because I don't think people really understand why. And then Jeremy can expand a little bit more, how it could, there are pros and cons related to shore power for us.
Sure. So my speech on shore power is, so first of all, I, I think some of you don't know this, but the first chip plug-in for shore power in the world was in Juno. And I weren't supposed to mention Juno, sorry, mayor. About the community up the, up the way. Yeah, someone over there. It's very mature technology, it's been used for many years in cargo as well. And we've got a number of ports here on the West Coast that are already enabled. We're looking at a few projects here in Alaska. The, the benefit of shore power is first and foremost, is it reduces local emissions. So the benefit to the community is the area bringing is going to be that much cleaner because the power is coming from hopefully a, a green power source, hydroelectric energy here in Ketchikan, being a great example. And the ships can power down their engines and, and run on clean power where they're plugged in. There's also noise reductions, so ships rumble and you don't notice it until it's gone, but it's a lot quieter. The third is that now, which has really become the primary reason why shore power has been kind of given a new life, is because of the carbon reduction targets that maritime shipping, all maritime shipping have to meet under the IMO. And at present, there's not alternative fuel sources out there for ships to be able to meet those targets. So shore power is one strategy to help reduce the total carbon output from a ship because when it's plugged in again, it's not, it's not using fuel. So we see different shore power structure or sort of financial arrangements around the world. In Europe, under FIFA 55, all European ports are mandated to be shore power enabled by 2030. That's a government mandate, so it comes with EU funding. And so we'll see really the entirety of Europe become electrified over the next several years. There's no such requirement in the US at present. So at present, it's really been at the port level, whether or not shore power is something that the community sees as a priority. The, the, the basic economics of shore power are, there's obviously the capital upfront. And that can, depending on the situation in a city, could be at the utility, it could be at the power source, it could be, most often, the biggest challenge is not, let me back up. If a community has power to sell, check the box. The biggest challenge typically is getting the power from the power station to the dock. And if it has to transit, for example, downtown city streets, which need to be torn up for conduit, the price tag starts to go up pretty quick. So part of the feasibility assessment needs to be, where's the power? Is there enough? How much is there? And how do we get it to the port? The actual equipment on the port, there is a footprint, there are some capital costs for that. That is not the most expensive part of the project typically. And that is, that equipment is generally, there's a couple of years waiting for it, but is generally a pretty straightforward install. There are several people and there are several operators in the world that can, can do that. The ships are all enabled for the most part, particularly ships that are deployed on the West Coast because you can't call in California if you don't plug in. So generally speaking, when ships get deployed in this market, they're already enabled for shore power. The best practice is that the power is on a mobile cable unit so that. So that no matter what ship comes in, wherever its plug is located, it can, it can plug in and actually use the shore power. There are ports that install it with a fixed jib, ships come in and they can't actually plug in, which just is sort of tragic. So that's really kind of in a nutshell. And I think what the question is for the community, besides, you know, the, the air emissions I mentioned earlier, is depending on whether you have power available to sell or the utility has power to sell, is, does that help the, the community's general power infrastructure, right? Because it's another revenue source. If you're selling power today that you're spilling over the dam, ostensibly that's money that could be used to improve resiliency in a power. Maybe it comes back in the form of a rate payer benefit of some sort. That, that is really between the utility and the city, not, not between us. At the end of the day, we just plug in and, and pay, pay for the power. You probably were in Juno, ALAP has a, has sort of a rebate program where, uh, the incremental power that they sold comes back to the rate payer on their bill. I think eight, nine million bucks so far have come back to rate payers as, as, as part of a discount because, um, it was a, you know, kind of a goodwill gesture when that project was done. So I think what the city would need to do and the utility and, um, maybe the other stakeholders is, is really sit down and start doing the feasibility work. Um, what would it take? How expensive would it make? And does the business case there? It's not always there, I'll just be honest. There are parts where it just doesn't financially make sense. And that's okay too, but I don't know that, I don't know if Ketchikan knows that answer yet or not. Maybe, maybe Jeremy's got a, got a sense.
Oh, do you have a microphone? Thank you. Thanks Tracy.
Jeremy Bynum, Electric Division Manager for KPU. You, you stole my thunder on most of these things on why you want to do, uh, shore power or why it could be beneficial to the community. But ultimately, um, I'll take a step back and look and answer the first question, which was, is there available power? And the answer is currently, yes, there is available power. And that is because our system as a whole, we spill, uh, I'm going to use the number 30 gigawatt hours of available power every year over the top of our dams on average. Uh, that number is a little bit higher when we go, but we'll go back to 1999, but we are seeing, um, beneficial electrification in the region, uh, through heating. The next thing is, so we have power available. The next thing is, is what is our largest source of sales when it comes to power from our utility? And in general, our li- largest sale is in the form of heating, heating homes. And then it's our industrial loads, uh, whether it's the shipyard or whether it's our fish processors. Uh, the shipyard fish processors, for the most part, are bringing on most of their load in the summertime. But our big peaks that we're seeing in our system happen in the winter time. And so from our electric system perspective, without any additional investment, we are seeing, although we have enough available power, we don't have enough peaking of power. And so this is where trying to figure out a relationship that will allow us to have additional sales, will help fund our ability to help, uh, help, uh, fund our ability to create additional peaking power for our communities because of beneficial electrification. One of those is shipshore electrification. And so we know that we have the available power. We know that we have the capability of doing the upland development to bring the peaking capacity. So KPU is currently working with our regional partners to answer that question of, do we have peaking capacity? Can we deliver? And the answer is yes, we can, we have a plan to do that. And that plan is in place and going to likely happen whether shipshore happens or not because of our, uh, needs for beneficial electrification. But we also want to maximize our resources in the, in the region and to maintain stable electric rates for our, our communities. And that's where the shipshore comes in. So some of the challenges that we face with shipshore is getting to the dock. In 2022, we evaluated what is the total cost of upland development plus the, uh, uh, work that needs to happen at the dock and the infrastructure needed to connect to the ships. And that number in 2022 was about 32 million. I think in general, when we did it, uh, presentation, we said between 30 and 40 is where we would need to be. And, um, then we were exploring other opportunities for, is there federal money available brands? What does a partnership look like with the industry? I think in 2022, talking about the, um, initiatives for reducing, uh, footprint while trans, uh, while, while in movement wasn't a big, uh, wasn't a big conversation at the time. At least when we were talking about it, it was more or less the benefits while import. So I think maybe there's some movement in the right direction when we talk about, uh, making sure that we can lower that overall carbon footprint for the ship itself. So the challenges that we face as the utility is, how is it going to be paid for? Typically, the utility will make sure that we're providing the infrastructure for what we need on our end for the peaking capacity. And also our ability to provide power down our lines. Um, we have a plan to get down to, uh, in this case, the city docks. Uh, the question then is, is how is it going to be paid for once it actually gets down there? I think our total upland development, uh, cost was about $4 million. Uh, when we were looking at KPU's costs, that was $20, $22. And that was also with our partnership with regional partners, with what they need to be able to bring into our system. And we're looking at how we can, uh, fund those.
Is that SEPA?
Yes.
Is that SEPA you're referring to?
That, that
Regional partner?
That is one of them.
Yeah.
SEPA, SEPA is our primary partner right now for, uh, dealing with their peaking concern, uh, beneficial electrification. So at the end of the day, we, you know, we can sit down and we obviously can have conversations about what does an agreement look like? How do we structure it? But the big question is going to be, how do we pay for the actual shoreside, um, shoreside equipment? And that's not typically something that KPU would do. We typically, when we're working with the shipyard or fish processor or the NOAA doc that just came in, the coast guard, we facilitate an ability to bring power to their facilities, but ultimately the, the facility owners pay for those. In this ca- in this case, it would be either, um, you know, who's ownership? We gotta, those are all things that we just don't know. Who's going to own the infrastructure down on the docks? Is it going to be a port facility, infrastructure? Is it going to be owned by the electric utility? And then what do we structure the rates on? Uh, right now, we have some of the lowest electric rates in Alaska. We have the lowest electric rate in Alaska. Let me rephrase that, we have the lowest electric rate in Alaska. We want to be able to try to make sure that we stay low. And by having partnerships with shipshore electrification is one way that we do that. So I'm not able to answer any questions. Ultimately, uh, I will be providing out information for the council members that highlights a lot of the benefits and then some of the challenges. One other thing that was mentioned too was this, um, in Juno, they provide back a little bit of funding for, um, the residents. And one of the things that we hear here in this community is, is that if we do shipshore electrification, will we run out of power? Because in 2018, 19, we experienced a drought in the region. And our utility spent about $4 million, uh, bringing in a bringing in additional diesel assets into the region and paying for diesel fuel. So one of the components that would be an absolute necessity if we do shipshore electrification is, is that we do have to develop a dedicated, uh, fund for rate stabilization to ensure that in the event that we run into low water conditions, drought, emergency, that we can, uh, prevent that impact from hitting our rate pairs. And we do that specifically through rate stabilization fund that would be subsidized through, uh, industrial, commercial, um, sales, specifically shore, shore, shore power would be a big contributor of that. So be sure that we have been looking and thinking about this, not just at KPU. We've been collaborating with the city, we've talked a little bit with the industry and our regional partners to say that this really does play into our la- larger need for electrification expansion to meet our needs in the winter time. Having a reliable, stable source of power to sell in the summertime when we have our lowest loads, helps us build a model that creates sustainability for low cost, uh, reliable electric rates i- in the region.
Thank you. If I could just come back on a couple of points, the, the one that you mentioned about rate stabilization fund and what, what happens when we run short in a drought year or whatever. All, every shore power agreement that I'm aware of, and there's, I don't know, 50 of them or whatever we have around the world are based on what's known as an interruptible power. So in the case of Juno, for example, if the lake level isn't there, um, we get turned off, right? So it's not, it's not, it's do no harm to the community. In places like California where their peak power is in the summertime, it's not unusual for brownouts to happen. And again, all the industrial nonessential users, which this would be the case, get turned off. So, um, so I presume that you'd, you'd have that same structure.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing it, absolutely. In, in the agreement that we would do as a power sales agreement, there would be the, the, the no harm, uh, to, to the utility to, uh, interrupt for any and all reasons.
Then the second key piece, we talked on the financial bit earlier about this or the capital side, right? Which can, some of it could be with utilities, some at the port. Um, your question about ownership, typically what we see around the world is that the utility owns up everything up until the property of the port and wherever the transformer facility may sit, step down transformer may sit. And then the equipment on the dock that's used to interface with the ship is typically owned by the port. The benefit of that is, um, that the port then can assess typically a recovery fee or something like that. The port would also typically who would arrange labor? Because you need labor to plug the ship in along with the ship's like electro technical. And that just gets, um, charged to us as, you know, part of the overall sort of service fee. The actual price of the power is the most important piece because for ships to use it, it has to, you know, I talked about this outside in the hallway, but for the benefit of others, it has to be competitive with fuel. Otherwise it won't be used. So in the, the, the challenge I see oftentimes is the rate is the last thing that gets discussed in a project, which is backwards, it should be somewhere agreed. So a lot of port or utilities will have an industrial rate structure or whatever. The sooner that gets sniffed out, it helps in the business case of whether or not it will get used. Because you don't want to spend all the money to do all this stuff and then have ships not plug in because it's not financially viable, right? Um, here in Alaska, generally speaking, power is less expensive. And so, um, it's, you know, Franklin Dock, we plug in every, every single call because it's, you know, it makes economic sense. There's places in the world where, um, the penalty of, of plugging in financially is, is so high that unless it's made compulsory, you know, some operators won't, they won't use it. So it's something to really bear in mind upfront.
Absolutely, thank you.
That's right, I think, uh, the, the really, the big question for the council is, do we want shore power? And do we want to pursue that? I know we've done somewhat of a high level study back, I know you and Mark worked on something around 2021, 22, that it is feasible in Ketchikan. And Jeremy is absolutely right, we could do it today. The biggest questions are going to be on the community side, is the footprint that Robert mentioned? What does that really look like on our docks? Because that's going to sit there whether or not we have cruise ships throughout the year. And, and what does it look like for us? The second is, and Robert alluded to this, is, is it fiscally feasible? So in other words, Jeremy and I were chatting, is the, uh, if we were to issue, let's say, a $32 million revenue bond or a $30 rev- uh, $30 million revenue bond, is the sales capacity or sales, uh, what we're, uh, uh, sorry, projecting, is that sufficient to pay that revenue bond without having to charge additional rates to our current rate payers? And that, that's really the big question. Is it financially feasible for us to meet that debt obligation? Because we don't have cash and the council note, we don't have any cash anywhere. We don't have any hidden caches of money and where we can make that investment. So we know that number one, we currently, I don't think we can sell enough to pay for that full debt issuance. So we know we're going to need either state or federal funding in order to, uh, supplement that effort. So the first question is, you know, does our council want shore power? Because we're going to have to invest a huge amount of time and effort to come up with those models as well as those feasibility studies and even engineer. I think a feasibility study, you guys already did a lot of work on that. So we know it's feasible. We just don't have any engineering design estimates yet. We have some.
Yeah, we have, we have, we have some just general design, uh, laying, like I said, we, we have an idea about how we're going to be able to get power to the docks, what upland upgrades need to happen for that. We have some generalized idea of costs. That was April of 22. So I know that in the electric, uh, industry right now, that we've seen some really big increases, uh, due to supply chain issues and then also a cost of raw materials. So that, that number is probably much bigger now. We'd have to really look at that again. But I think, you know, we talked about like, uh, revenue bond on something like this. The big question is going to be is who has to carry the revenue bond? Uh, do they have the capacity to carry it even with guaranteed revenues? So we're looking at between three to $4 million of annualized cost to carry that bond. And then, uh, what kind of agreements do we actually come up with? So I think one of the first things that if we're going to be making a path forward in this space, we need to have a better understanding about what the obligation would be under an agreement. Who's going to connect with, if it's available, you know, basically saying, if power is available, you will then connect. And what, what are the parameters for that? And so all of those things, so we can kind of figure out the financial, uh, payback on that. And then the other question is, 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 is the industry going to be a willing partner in helping participate in some of that forward cost? Uh, again, I know that, uh, nothing is free, uh, that whatever agreement comes into place would have to be at the benefit of both parties. Uh, but there might be a, some benefit for, uh, the industry to be partaking in a part of that upfront cost for potentially like a discount on rate kind of thing. So basically forward funding, uh, part of your rate through that, that component. So we're not carrying, the port technically isn't going to carry all of the risk of, of making the investment, you know?
Yeah, I think this is all about coming up with a business case, right? And so, um, you've got a good start on the feasibility piece, but that would certainly need to be sharpened up with today's costs and, or projected costs, right? And, um, as far as figuring out the related economics of it, I think it's hard, you know, we're here to partner with that. I mean, we do this in other ports. Also mentioned that we are, and for those of you who might be going to Sea Trade, I'm not sure if there's anybody, uh, this year from Ketchikan going down there. We're hosting a, so you want to electrify your dock? Seminar there. We've produced a, a pamphlet as well that we've shared out with ports, um, on the PIDP, the DERA, all the different grant opportunities. So those are important in the business case as well, whether they're successful or not. Um, they also can help garner some state, uh, support as well, particularly where there's a match. So I think it sounds like what we need to do, Jeremy, is just to agree that, you know, depending on where the council sits on, this is a priority amongst catheterization and everything else is, is, um, let's work together on a business plan and figure out what must be true to make it make sense. Yeah.
I know that, um, both Jeremy and Delilah are aware, but I would let others in the room know. We are still talking about this. We're talking about shore power and the importance of shore power at a state level and a federal level as well. And I think as we look to, um, the environmental regulations that are coming and our goals of, of being net zero carbon cruisers by 2050, all of these things come into play. And so as we look to future proof our itineraries in Alaska, that is part of why we're having these conversations at the state and federal level and with local communities like yourself.
Preston? Yeah, thank you. As, as part of the, the business case and any work that's been done, what is the outcome for, out of the four berths? Do you know the capacity, would it be for all four of them?
The, the original concept was that we would have power available at all four. I have to go back and look at, I believe the answer is yes, all four would have power. However, the capacity comes into question about what is the needed, need for ship capacity. Uh, I originally, uh, they had sent, uh, industry had sent us kind of a guide about which ships are taking what kind of power. It really would depend on the blend at the dock. We would be able to build our capacity over time because we'd be getting some of those additional upland facilities available to us. I think that our overall capacity limit was about 20 megawatts, but it really is going to depend on what's happening in the industry as a whole, uh, in the community, fish processing, et cetera. capacity limit was about 20 megawatts, but it really is going to depend on what's happening in the industry as a whole, in the community, fish processing, et cetera. So.
Yeah, and I would say we can also through our technical working group, make sure that you get that information for the ships of today and tomorrow to make sure that we're looking at that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think I provided that info a couple of years ago. And to Preston's point, all of our ships have gotten much more efficient in the last few years because again, with the carbon regulations we're under right now, the, the best thing we can do is just get use less power. You use less power, use less fuel, you have less emissions. And no matter what fuel you use in the future, that'll also always be true. So there's been some real efficiency gains just in the last couple of years.
I think if I remember looking at some of that, some of the data said that you, some of the ships were down as low as four megawatts and some ships had 12 megawatts of need. And so it really is going to just depend on which ships are in port and who's going to be taking on power. But we'd be absolutely on board with making sure we're maximizing that capability when ships are in port.
And I'll, I'll be honest, we, when we first talked about this as far as projects on the port, shore power is very, very low on the list. And I know that was something when even Jeremy and I talking to council, like, should we pursue feasibility? Should we pursue more engineering? And it was kind of, ah, we've got so much need between cathodic protection and, and taking care of our peers and ensuring our docks are safe. It was low on the list. And so if, if you could speak to why we should prioritize it, because that will be a council decision. Do you want us to spend the staff time, resources and investment on the port to pursue that project? And so I know it's a priority for you all as far as the carbon goals and whatnot, but what, what should our council know related to that, that effort? Like, why, why is it a good investment? We talked a little bit about how the additional generation could possibly help our ratepayers and, and building out that new capacity if we needed it. But is there anything else you could add?
Well, I think Wendy made a point on her comment that worth repeating to me. Part of why some ports are pursuing shore power is that they know that it will help ensure that ships will continue to call as we age through the effort to get to net zero, right? Because if you can take five, six, seven, eight, 10 hours off of carbon production in an itinerary and particularly in Alaska where you can do that in multiple ports, you can make a nice dent in your carbon footprint. That's, that's a consideration for some, some ports. I think generally though, it's I would say, yeah, we'd love you to pursue this feasibility study, but I don't know what the draw is on your internal resources. And, and I think you'd have to, you know, evaluate that as a leadership group. But we're all standing by to help as much as we can. And, you know, whatever, when, in whatever way we can, we also have some technical folks who I think we may have shared, Jeremy, I don't remember if we sent Mike Watts your way. But, you know, this guy's done just about every shore power install in North America, can tell you how to engineer it in the most efficient, cost-effective way. Because if you go to a large consulting company, I can tell you right now, you're going to get an overbuilt, overpriced system. So yeah, I don't know that that's really an answer for me, Delilah, other than I can't speak to your resources. We're happy to help if we can.
I appreciate that because, you know, ultimately we'll take our capital direction from council and, and they need to be well informed on those decisions and investments. Oh, sorry, Wendy.
I was just going to quickly add on, sometimes momentum is your friend. And right now we've got some good support at the state level. You've got Senator Stedman, who's really on fire. I don't think I've, I hear him talk about Southeastern Cruising when he doesn't add in shore power and his efforts on electrification. Same with the governor. You've got, as Robert covered, a lot of grants that may be hobbled together. So if you look at the current environment, that may elevate priority just a little bit, at least to take it to the next step in, in the business planning aspect. I also, I'm not sure what's going on with DOT in the past. I've heard that they had some, you know, if they're in doing roadwork and there's some funding to decarbonize associated with federal dollars. So I don't know if they're part of your partnership group, Jeremy, or not. But anyway, just some thoughts on the politics of it all.
Yeah, I just, I guess I just want to add further to everybody's comments and the alignment that we all have, that it's important. It's an important piece of the future. And I would encourage you as you start to look at and put this plan together, that it's always a priority. So although that the U.S., like Robert had said, doesn't have as many strict guidelines as Europe has and what we're, what we're seeing through the, through the EU Parliament, that's you know, a daily dialogue on how to get to their fit for 55 and their 2050 goals. But we operate all globally. So when you look at what we put out on a global level in our sustainability reports, our ESG reports, we have committed as a company, as a global company to get to net zero by 2050. And that includes all itineraries. And as we start to go in that direction where we all have interim targets that we've set. So we wouldn't want to see us not reaching some type of target in Alaska in general and have it either, you know, competing for, for itineraries that are more fuel efficient or, or meet our guidelines that we need to get to. We do have the Green Corridor project that's on the horizon that we're doing to try and create the first green corridor. I'm not sure who's gonna, who's gonna win if that's in North America or now if that's in the world, because I'm hearing lots of shipping corridors, green corridors now over, over in, in the EU as well. But as part of that plan, the more that we can elevate that and create a dialogue around it, there could be some funding coming that way as well. Not only for, not only for biofuels, but also for, for plugging in. So I just want to say to encourage it to always be part of your conversation and always have it on the horizon as somewhere that you want to get. But I also want to emphasize finally too, that what Robert said is our, our ships are getting more and more fuel efficient because we view that as the best way to get to our, to get to our carbon intensity on our GHG goals is to just plain reduce what we're using on the ship and whether that be through heat recovery systems, new coatings on the, on the outside of our hull to use less energy, changing our lighting, doing programming in the entertainment area that doesn't require as, as much drawn or electrical power. That's our, that's our first goal is just reduce that power. And as we reduce that power and then we have new fuels and then we have shore power, that all gets us to our goals. So we just encourage the discussion to continue and collaborate with us on it.
Councilmember Gage and Councilmember Kissler.
In all fairness, I think that electrifying our port is great. However, I also don't like putting the cart before the, before the horse when we don't have a viable port system. So if the infrastructure is not solid and we have electrification sitting there that no longer can be used because the ships can't come in, what's the point? Then we can't fund putting that in. So we can't pay it back. So, I mean, I, I think rewind because at the end of the day, yeah, it's all nice and would be beautiful and I'm all about green. And I don't like to be Debbie Downer, but we had this conversation multiple times as that first come. What needs to happen first is our port needs to be viable, structure-wise. And that should be the conversation is how do we get there? Before we start talking about electrification. Togus Avenue will be getting torn up by DOT. Love to know what DOT is doing for other countries. In the past 40 years, I've been here my entire life. And Ketchikan has always been last one to get anything. And most of us know that half our sidewalks are not ADA compliant. Some of them were built in the 50s. They're as old as my mother. So I, you know, it'd just be nice if we, to bring it back to the conversation that, you know, before we start talking about electrification, get off the, get off the actual subject is that we really have to have a port that's going to be, that's going to be able to hold the, the boats. Because if you can't, if you can't dock, you can't buy a shore power. And then we have a $45 million bill that we can't fund or pay for.
I don't think anyone disagrees with you, Councilmember. I mean, but, 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 but then again, it's still, I think what we're asking is that it be part of the conversation. And that's what we're here today to talk about is all of the different things that we're facing as an industry and a community in our partnership. So don't disagree with you, but definitely would, I think all we were trying to express is that we'd like it to still continue to be part of the conversation.
It's more interesting.
So I initially heard about this shore power when I first became a council member and and I, I was all excited about it and not too much excitement at the time from anyone else, but it is starting to at least gain some feasibility. So I, I agree, we should keep it on the table. Obviously we have other bigger issues that we have to take care of that are more present. And, and we can do things in the meantime to maybe look forward to shore power when the street is torn up and maybe put some things in, looking forward to something like that. I'm wondering if anyone has any ideas about, because there are these funding opportunities right now and, and we just don't have the money for the match. We just don't have it. Does anybody have any ideas about how long this is going to be a thing? And so that the opportunity doesn't get passed up for the grant opportunities that are out there right now. I don't know how long they're going to last. And if anybody has any inklings about future opportunities.
Yeah. So I would add through some work in some other ports, there's currently a defined amount of federal funding. Is that what you're referring to for the grant match? And yeah, there's certain percentages and formulas for the communities. I would say certainly one of the prime requirements is to have the feasibility done and to have a pretty well-defined budget to make yourself competitive. You know, large ports, commercial ports, cargo ports are also going after, you know, these funds pretty aggressively with, as we mentioned, grant writers. And so they, for the city to go after that, certainly be aggressive in the timing of what we're getting to. Those bills were passed, you know, a couple of years ago that laid this out. And as we know today, the situation, it's, it's a fixed amount of money. And so whether that comes up again, I think it's, is anyone's guess, but certainly it's, it's a pot of money that's going to be exhausted through this application process.
Any idea of how long it might go before it's exhausted? Any inside information?
Other than it's through the EPA now, you know, they're, they're clearly reviewing applications. And I would say, you know, a lot of these, as we've discussed, are 50-plus million dollar projects. And so that doesn't include a lot of recipients kind of based on what we see today.
Councilmember Kissler. So part of, part of your question was talking about the match money. And when we looked at this in 2022, we know that when we're going out asking for federal money for electrification, that there was a significant match component to that. From our local perspective, we were looking at leveraging current, already planned current needs to meet our, our beneficial electrification that's happening to us as part of that match. And I believe when we were putting that together, that there was a component where we were looking to say, this is where we wanted to have a partnership with the industry to help with that match component. But I believe that the majority of the four to six million dollars of upland development was going to be something that we were paying for, not just from KPU's perspective, but with our regional partners to create the pie, that, that part of the pie that was considered match. So it's not just getting coming to the table with cash. It could be coming to the table with any other part of that project development that was considered part of the match money. And so we did have that as part of our assessment in the 2022 presentation. And we'd be outside of here, happy to share that presentation and go over that presentation again to talk a little bit about how do we leverage our current needs, our ongoing activities, and then requesting the partnership with the, the industry to say, here's how we come up with that match money.
I know for some of the federal programs, they go through a reauthorization process each year. So PIDP got reauthorized. That's the big, that's the big one that most people are going after in shore power. I don't know how, how, if that's going to happen again in the future. I would imagine, this is just me guessing, don't write it down, that given the long-term objective to decarbonize basically everything, that there will be ongoing programs, et cetera. I think that the challenge is always maritime is one of those segments of the industry that oftentimes is not in people's minds when they're crafting legislation. And it's sort of an unseen industry. So we're trying to really be aggressive with what's available on the table now, just because we know historically maritime sometimes isn't, isn't as top of mind as air because everybody flies and other transportation sectors. So.
I wanted to address something that was asked a few moments ago, and that was, how does this benefit the city of Ketchikan? We understand how this is benefiting the industry, but when we take a step back and say, how does this benefit Ketchikan? There's a couple of things that we know for certain. Number one, we currently have lost energy over our spillways. And that lost energy directly costs our utility in the form of a payment to a regional partner, lost energy. That's happening now. That cost us that cost us between a quarter million and three quarters of a million dollars of a year, a year for that lost revenue that's happening in the system. The other thing that we know that's happening is, is that we see beneficial electrification happening and our community is pushing hard to, from the community's perspective, they're pushing hard to come up with cheaper alternatives to heat their homes. So we're seeing a big explosion of not just direct electro heating, but of heat pumps and those sorts of things happening in our community. And that's causing something on, on our utility right now that we don't have control over, and that's forced demand. So when we have forced demand, that means that we have to be able to provide the power. We have to, or we're having rolling brownouts or blackouts in our community. We're seeing that load growth happen pretty rapidly. And so there's things that we're currently doing with one of our regional partners, SEPA, and that's adding a, there's been presentations on this where they're adding a third unit Taiyi. They're talking about adding an additional substation out at Word Cove so that we can meet that, that forced demand. One of the things that helps us in the utility make those things happen is having an interruptible power sales agreement with an, with a partner like the cruise lines here with ship shore electrification. We could enter into, as an example, a power sales agreement with them right now without having anything built yet. It might take five, 10 years to actually develop out that infrastructure at the docks. But with that power sales agreement, we then can leverage it to invest in third unit Taiyi for SEPA or other regional partners that want to do things. It helps us back our revenue bonds when we need to do emergency diesels for Bailey or upgrading our substations. And so it gives us a lot of leverage from a financial perspective that when we enter into these interruptible power sales agreements, that we have those as backing for our ability to do all of the other electrical benefit upgrades that we need to benefit our community as an overall strategy. So there are direct benefits to the city of Ketchikan and our residents, not just here in, in Ketchikan, but with our other regional partners in Petersburg and Wrangell by having these kinds of agreements with, with the city of Ketchikan's ports and the regional, or the cruise line. with the city of Ketchikan's ports and the regional, or the cruise line partners.
General, can you tell us, how long does it take to connect and disconnect from shore power? We're a, we're a community of relatively short port calls. I'd also like to know if you have any information on the net benefit to the reduction in air pollution and idling versus a cold or a semi-cold start, which is going to be a high emission event. So how long would an engine have to be at rest to offset the peak emissions that's going to happen when you restart that engine?
Sailor, you want to take it?
I think in, in two parts. So the first, the first part about how long does it take to get online? So we would say it's a phased approach. It doesn't just come on and we go up on the load over about an hour. And then it's similar on the way back down. So you could say two hours coming in total, an hour coming up and an hour coming down. As far as the, the technical aspects of those emissions, I would point towards our technical working group to get back to you on that. I don't think that's something that we can provide detail today.
Thank you. I, I pointed to him, but I'm still answering the question too. So, sorry. We do actually measure it as well. I wish it was like NASCAR, you know, they chip pull in and boom, plug it right in. But as Preston said, it we use it on modeling an hour, but it's usually about 40 minutes on each side. But it depends a lot on what's going on on the key side. So most places we plug in are home ports. You also have storing going on, you have multiple getting ways, you know, 30, 40 trucks visiting the ship, fueling all that. So that tends to impede it. When we do it in a place like Juneau or other transit port, a protocol like Ketchikan, it's usually faster. The emissions, we can, we can, as Preston said, we can get it. And there are some ports now in Seattle is one of them who actually track that. And it's publicly available information as well on their website because they use that in their overall airshed emissions factor for the, for the year.
Thank you.
Yep.
I guess just to follow up on, 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 she quite good addressed. But is, is there a point where it's not, granted, we're talking about shorter calls here. You take an hour off, take an hour off, three, four hours in the middle. Is that still worth it to go through this?
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a great question. I mean, part of the feasibility is the, the way we look at it, and others may do it differently, is we look at the hours in port and we take away that, you know, plug-in, unplug time. And it's the, you know, total hours in port across our operating theater right for a year and get what the annualized hour. So the connected hours is really the, the denominator you want to use in the math to, to figure it out. And so that's part of the, really part of the, the rate case. So for a really short port call, yeah, probably, probably questionable whether or not it makes sense. The, the other question I don't think we really quite answered is the, the, the burst and startup rate with diesel engines. Yeah. So that's something that we've technically, we've been working on because part of the benefit of shore power as well as it reduces visible emissions. So you can be plugged in all day and you go to start up your engine and you puff black smoke and you still get the complaint. You don't get the credit for the eight hours, right? You get the complaint for the puff of smoke. So even though diesel engines, they, you know how they start. Yeah, yeah. So I know what you do. So that is a technical piece of working on where they're trying to meter it up and have a, have a less of a, a burst on load. There's also been some experimentation with some of the lines around using batteries in port. And that's part of the benefit as well as if the ship has a battery, it can be used in the maneuvering portion when, you know, the total load on the ship is relatively low, low propulsion as a way to maneuver in port without any, any visible emissions or, or other emissions. So it's a number trying to crack.
So next, I, my, my, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, really.
I just had a quick question. One, well, two, you asked the one, so I'll skip that one. But to backtrack to you, Mr. Morgan Stern, from the point you made earlier about, I just was curious, you mentioned that you guys have partnered with other ports around the world and use the term partnering to, with the shore power situation. Could you just elaborate on what that partnership looks like in general financially and in other ways?
Yeah, that's a good question. So the first several shore power installs we did, we, in Juneau and in the port of Seattle, we actually own the equipment in the port of Seattle. We, we invested in it directly in order to make that happen. It's not our preferred way to go, not because we don't want to spend the money, but because on the ongoing basis, we don't want to be responsible for capital and somebody else's support. But we've, we have taken that route before. Obviously, the stuff we've talked about here before in terms of assisting on the financial business case, lobbying for, for federal or other match fund sources, those kinds of things. Technical assistance. So not only the grant writer I mentioned, but we worked with one of our shore power installers to be the technical partner. That is a project savings to a community, right? Instead of having to go out and go through an RFP and hire somebody who's, who's a shore power installer, we'll, we generally try to bring that person to the table. It saves everybody money and time. So, yeah, so it's just kind of a variety there. And then depending on the economic situation with a, with an install and whatever the larger business case, the sort of supporting fee to help either do capital cost recovery or ongoing operational support, those are all literally different in every port, but is, is part of the discussion. And so there's some different arrangements there, but that's another component area where we can come to agreement. Hopefully that helps.
So next item, we're going to touch on this a little bit, use of shore, use of thrusters. What I have to confirm, I'm, I'm quick here. We, personally, stand for, are continuing to, to do what our, our engineering, to determine what it's going to cost to, obviously. So we'll, we'll have, have a number for you guys at some point, probably in, in the not too soon in the future. But it also sounded as though the, the industry itself is looking at, at operational things it could possibly do to ameliorate that going forward, at least in, at least short term. Is that correct?
Yeah. Thanks, Mayor Kuyfer. I would say for myself, and I think for the group, this has been a recent announcement that, and although I think for the city and some others here, it's been something that you guys have discussed for a while. But certainly we're, we're open to understanding more about the, the past impacts. And then certainly we will do whatever we can operationally in the interim to, to minimize that impact towards the, the pilings and towards that area.
I think any additional information that you can share from the city's perspective, you know, engineering reports, et cetera, we can pass that information along to our technical teams and be able to give you a better idea. You never want to ask the government relations person anything technical. That's my rule.
Just going to say that.
I think that is one of my follow-ups that after this meeting, that's our staff responsibility to get with you and share that information. Let's start talking about operational changes.
Yeah, there's a subcommittee of CLIA called Ops and Tech, and you've probably heard references to that before, but it's the actual mariners and people who do know what they're talking about when it comes to this stuff. And so that's a good, a good project for them to work with you guys on.
In fact, we're actually working, there'll be a meeting at Sea Trade. And I was just thinking, you know, we, we helped to develop that agenda. And this is something that we can at least flag that will be coming from the city.
Yeah, I think it's not, I mean, we've had suspicions over the past several years about issues, but it wasn't until we saw what actually happened with the promenade that it's like, well, okay, something's causing this and that. So I, I don't think it's, it's not necessarily been on our, you know, our plate a lot long either. We're still trying to figure it out too. Okay. Passenger movement assessment in person.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor. That one I'm actually going to turn over to Lori because she's had some discussions with Jose and, and his team. So one of the biggest comments that comes up from our own citizens, as well as businesses and pedestrians and drivers, is that management of the traffic flow. I know we even talked about it during our dock vendor placement of, you know, I, I watch it from my window and I scare myself a little bit when I see those big throngs of people moving in our crosswalks. And so we know that we need to do a better job of passenger flow. We don't know what the solutions are. We don't know if it's street closures, directional changes, traffic flow changes, staging areas. There are lots of options. I'm not a traffic engineer. We don't have a traffic engineer. Mark Hilson has a great comment about traffic engineers, that they may not necessarily be highly qualified in Ketchikan. So we may not have a, a Alaskan traffic engineer. But Lori, if you want to take that on, I've had, you and Jose have had more conversations on that.
So, yes, thanks, Delilah. Thank you, Mayor. We have been having some initial discussions. I met with Jose Fernandez, who's on the screen up there, and we've been having conversations about his engineering, his Imagineers, as they're called, coming and taking a look at how people move through our community. I think that none of us could argue with the fact that Disney has it down pat. They understand how to move people, how to distribute people, how to create wayfinding so that if you've ever been at any of their facilities, you know where you are, where you're going, and how to get back to where you need to get with no questions asked. Also, if you've ever been in one of the parks on a day that's been, quote, busy, you still don't feel like you're in a really crowded park. It's all in the way that they engineer the people movement. And so we've been discussing this. Jose, I'm going to turn it over to you in a sec. And I have created a shared folder that I've been downloading information about maps and just all different kinds of information about the downtown core area so that his engineers can have information before they come. And I believe that they may even have chosen a date that they're going to be coming to visit us this summer. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Jose.
Thanks, Lori. And, and just before I jump in, just want to say thank you to everybody for taking the time to have this dialogue, have this conversation on all these topics. We periodically will deploy our industrial engineers to various ports to just help us really, you know, from a cruise line perspective, a Disney cruise line perspective, take a look at things from a guest experience standpoint to understand guest flow, traffic, safety, signage, you know, placement of whether it's, you know, kiosks or vendors, shore excursion, dispatch, what have you. And what we generally do is we try to take a look at it from a destination perspective, not just a Disney cruise line perspective, because usually the work that our industrial engineers do and what they identify will benefit our operation, but generally it has sort of a waterfall effect in helping the entire area. And by and large, particularly in, in the destinations that we visit as ports of call such as Ketchikan, there's a lot of partnership that we need from the community to help maybe, you know, put some signs up or help us in working with the partners, you know, private partners to maybe shift where their kiosks are or, you know, rearrange where the buses may park, et cetera. So this is something that we've been really excited to do since we restarted operations and just with priorities and getting the fleet up and running and taking delivery of our new ships and a whole host of other things. We haven't been able to do it, but very excited that we are finally able to do it. We are going to be sailing on Disney Wonder beginning July 15th. I'm trying to pull up my calendar right now to see what day we will be in Ketchikan, but we will be visiting.
July 17th, we'll be in Ketchikan.
Awesome. Thank you, Beth. So July 17th, we're going to have two industrial engineers and they're just going to be there really to observe. But Lori has been an amazing partner because she has created this share site and loaded it with a ton of good information. Really for us, what we want the visit to be is just one part of the process, right? We want to understand from the community, from the leaders, what are those pain points? You know, are there specific streets that are problematic? Are there specific areas that are problematic? What are those pain points for you? So we can start looking at the maps, look at the layouts, look at what's going on. When the team gets there, they already have a sense of what's going on. And then they actually see the people coming off. They see how tours get dispatched. And obviously in Ketchikan, it's a bit of a unique situation because the docks aren't all right next to each other. So you have one and two, and then three and four. So any, any information that you can provide is going to be immensely helpful. I'm actually going to be setting up calls because we have been working with our team to identify who would be coming with us on this adventure, because I'm going to be there as well, along with Beth and her team. So now that we've got some folks identified, we're going to be setting up meetings, not just with Ketchikan, but with all the partners who are going to be visiting on that sailing to just get a better understanding of what are the pain points? Get a sense of what the layout is, and then we'll be there to observe. And then typically, the work product, just to kind of, you know, the work product is generally kind of just a list of recommendations, right? We've done this in a number of other ports around the world. And usually what the team does is just provide, hey, look, this is what we observe. We think if you add some signage here, this is going to help move these people in this direction. We saw congestion in this area. If you move these things around, you should see a better flow going in and out. So it's really just going to be a set of recommendations and thoughts. We try to be mindful about costs. So obviously tearing up streets and redirecting traffic, that's like at the, at the further end of the spectrum. We try to find that low-hanging fruit that can easily be implemented and something that again, just doesn't benefit us and our guests. We are trying to keep the rest of our industry partners in mind as well as the community to find something that's a win-win across the board.
So I think one of the important aspects is for us to go through this process and really ask the experts of how we can best move people in our facility, our, our town. The thing to keep in mind for the public is that there will be recommendations, but we'll also have to go through that public input process. So we're not going to be shutting down streets tomorrow and saying, yeah, well, Disney said so, or, you know, this is what we're going to do. We're going to have that public vetting process. And I just want to emphasize that because when the council adopted their core values last year in April, transparency, transparency, transparency. So we've been having a lot more public meetings than we did in the past. And so I just want to emphasize everything we're talking about today, there is going to be that public input and public meeting component.
I would greatly appreciate avoiding anything that says Disney shut down something. But yeah, no, a hundred percent, right? It's a dialogue and it's a set of recommendations. And, and you know, we obviously do not live in the community. And so what our team is doing is taking the information they have, observing, and then providing some thoughts on how they would see it in a vacuum. I can tell you, in the time I've been here and in the ports that we have done these exercises in, there's usually some tweaking that needs to be done because no matter how well you engineer something, humans find a way to find alternative routes. So, so it's definitely an iterative process. And that context from the community around sort of how things are is going to be really helpful and instrumental in sort of shaping whatever the recommendations end up being in terms of implementation.
Anyway, so a couple of items. One was, we were asked by some council members to, to encourage the industry to work partnerships with local engineers and meeting groups. And actually the point, you know, Jose just mentioned in terms of finding out, you know, in terms of meeting. Groups that are working on signage and things like that. And I think that's, obviously the KBB is involved, that story Ketchikan, other groups. And so we want to be encouraging the industry to find ways to work with some of those groups going forward. Also to let the community or funding partnerships the industry might have available for various things.
I think that would be probably both of those things would speak to our relationship going forward. I think it's helpful for you as community members to let us know, let us know what partnerships you see are lacking. And again, then we go back to individual member companies and determine what's possible, what the art of the possible is. But I think that all comes from that two-way communication that I hope, that I think we're seeking. And I do know, for example, like Robert was saying earlier, we, we have tried to
we have tried to put little funding ideas. And I think that's something you'll see continue. I think as we talk even about shore power and other aspects of the industry, we're very fortunate, I think all Alaskans know, we're very fortunate to have a delegation in Washington DC that fights really hard for Alaska. And I think you'll see them continue as we talk about reduction of greenhouse gas emissions and that type of thing. They will continue to fight for the things that places like Ketchikan and the rest of our state need because we are a really unique place. And I think maintaining your relationship with people like Sherri Klein, who works for the two senators here, will be, you know, a huge part of that as well because Sherri flags things. Sherri and I used to work together and I know she's very, very passionate about her love of Ketchikan and flagging things that you all could benefit from. But I think, again, part of that, letting us know what you need from us. But then absolutely, we will continue to keep you aware of what we know is coming from a federal grant perspective or a local grant perspective.
Well, in truly Ketchikan, we own our own nonprofits. And we have, I don't know the number percentages wise, but actually, most communities in Alaska have a huge number of services being provided by nonprofits. And if there's any way that you can work with them and also to elevate them to possible, you know, opportunities is always a good thing for everybody. Because they do things to keep them needed.
And with that, Mr. Mayor, I think the big message is, and I'll pick on Jamie and Chris because they were here today, but their businesses, their local businesses are pretty much supporting, and not just their businesses, but their local businesses, along with even the mayor's wife. We have all these local business owners who are incredibly generous and incredibly involved in contributing to the youth in the nonprofits of our community. So you'll see Parnassus and Tongas and Captain's Lady. You'll see their logo pretty much on every sporting jersey, event banner, discount coffin. We have several businesses that have that sort of investment in our community. And so one of the questions that came up is how do you demonstrate these huge corporations who really do have a big impact as businesses in our community, showing that support, that same level of support in Ketchikan? And, you know, it could be as easy as a $500 sponsorship to the softball team or, you know. How do we engage that way? Because we have these local, and I'm not saying that you have that obligation to our community, but really, that's, I'll be honest, and I'm totally speaking out of turn, but I love in Ketchikan that we get that sort of small business support. I've never seen that in any community I've lived in where the small businesses are really showing their support of the community as a whole. And they're very, very active and incredibly generous. And so we're seeing that from our small business owners and yes, to the residents. But the question is, how do we also make that partnership with these large impactful corporations who do come to town and you are a big presence?
I'm sorry.
Turn this on. I think one thought or idea might be to pull some of our community relation type folks into that conversation. Part of it's to understanding, you know, being a big global company, what our pillars for giving are. So, you know, there's, each company, each business is going to have some kind of priority set. So for us, it's around education, it's around marine conservation. So when you have a nonprofit that really focuses in on certain areas that match up with our pillars, it's a lot easier for our, you know, certain parts of our business to say, yes, that makes sense. And so I'm not going to just volunteer or vol and tell Helen, but we have a person on our team who looks at some of these types of things. So maybe we can form a meeting down the line virtually with the right players just to have a conversation around that, if that's helpful.
I'll pop in here and, you know, Ketchikan is a unique community when it comes to the arts and the nonprofits and every arena. And I don't think that, you know, it doesn't go without saying that one of the main reasons people like coming here is the fact that we have one of the largest arts communities in the state. And that's what people, and half our businesses, host local artists. I think that I would like to see where the industry actually puts a funding mechanism that goes into a coffer that can be distributed where it doesn't require the nonprofits to attempt to find the funding. And I think 500 is, I've heard this said over the years, not recently, but over the years, it's why haven't you applied for some of the fundings that the cruise industry offers? Well, because the paperwork wasn't worth the money. The time put into the paper was not worth the money they were offering. So I think, you know, we have the Ministry Gallery, we have the First City Players, we have, we have multiple, like, WELZ Coalition that deals with mental health and all varieties of areas that are beneficial, that make this community vibrant. And without them, this community would not be what it is today. And I think it's important that when we talk about this, it should be, you know, like we have a hospital, our hospital, at least that we made, we require them to put so much money into those, into the community and back into the community and into the nonprofits. So I think that would be where I'd like to see that go.
So circling back a little bit. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I can't, actually, I couldn't see your name. It's not actually aims, I could see it. The mayor has to be able to see it to recognize you. No, I think.
So I guess I'll keep my comments pretty short. I personally have seen the industry participate in a lot of sponsorships. I was a recipient of a cruise that was auctioned off for one of the nonprofits. So I do appreciate that. I think that as far as that goes, we see you everywhere. What I want to know now, though, is what's next? So we've talked about this, we've had this meeting, I've been on the city council, I took a year off last year. But for 10 years, we've been talking about all this stuff. So what do we do next? How do we get an agreement like Juno has? What's the next step? Who do we have to meet with? Who's got to be at the table? How do we make that happen?
That's the question. What is the next step from your perspective? I would like to see some sort of agreement in place before next summer.
Absolutely. I think we agree.
Exactly. As council members, as you said, how does that happen? Whose attorneys meet with who? Who comes up with a framework? Where do we go?
So I think it's important to remember that the agreement that we have with Juno came out of, you know, a contentious situation. Exactly. And so I don't necessarily know that we need to have lawyers involved. I think from our perspective, from Clea's perspective and our member lines perspective, and I'm sure they will all jump in at some point. But we can set a framework, talking with each other, whether that's Delilah and Clea and, you know, getting feedback from you, getting feedback from our member lines, put something to paper and get it before the council. But I think the goal is, okay, if we want to do it similar to Juno, then we receive a list of projects from all of you that are your wish list. And we, as we are doing in Juno, we will either say, you know, green, green, red, yellow, you know, caution. Ultimately, like, we're telling you what our thoughts are. You can go ahead and move forward on any project, but we're telling you, like, that one is not even in the gray area, that's in the maybe no-go area. You know, you have that conversation, you have that dialogue. And I think it's part of a larger conversation. You're also going to see, you know, we do have a good situation, you know, we do work that process quite, quite well. You're going to see these conversations take place across the state. We are wanting to make sure that every community has something in place with us so that we do have a, you know, by October 1st, the city of Ketchikan will have us their wish list. By December 1st, we will have responded to said wish list. And if that means we all come together and have something like this, then, you know, what do you want, what do we want? And I think we can work together and put something, put a framework in place.
Does it have to be, I'm not sure how Juno operates, but does it have to be a project specific or can it be more general than that? Because I guess the question is, I'm not doing that through the process on both our sides, having to disagree or argue over a specific project. Or we just want to be able to say, okay, this type of project's okay. This type of project's not okay. Here's the goal.
I think we can, I think that's up to us as the two parties involved to decide.
We don't have to have the exact model of Juno, but we have to have a model.
Exactly. I think that's absolutely true. Not every, it's not a one-size-fits-all, I would argue, but. And, Mr. Mayor, to that point, I, just based on the conversations today, I'd imagine that we have some sort of documented agreement where we, and this is the notes I've been taking of what it's going to look like at the end of this discussion, is that we acknowledge and affirm our own acceptance of our interpretation of the federal laws. Like, this is what we all affirm and acknowledge, this is what we believe is acceptable. And so that, what is acceptable use, that all parties are comfortable with that, that we commit to agreeing on a process for those projects, whether it be an annual process, an annual review, whatever that component is, that we include that process in an agreement, that we commit to revenue requirement review as far as the parameters for developing morphage fees, that through this document, we say, yes, that is acceptable use or that's an acceptable component of the port revenue requirement, which does translate into revenue generation and rate setting for the port, that we agree on acceptable or necessary upland development to serve the port, that there may be items there that are. And then just now, maybe a possible grant component that we all agree to. Or, you know, those are the items I have thus far. And this is what that initial agreement would look like.
This is the old school, we're going to hand up on a Zoom call now.
Exactly. Wish we never seized the hand so small. This is the size of about this big.
Okay, I know I went up before you, a little quicker. But my thoughts before you started speaking, Delilah, you have really, really captured it quite well of exactly the path that you're going to take. And I think you structured it correctly. And I have to applaud you from this three-hour meeting, coming back with those exact facts. Those were great. And I think it's each year that you go into this, as you get to know which projects are okay and what, you know, where they follow the red, yellow, green principles. I think you'll get smarter and smarter about what is not, and not ever put forth things that are like, oh, no, that's a no-go. And as you set out your plan for the next five years, you'll know what those funds can cover and what they can't. So the comments I had were exactly what you said of how we should know about it. So thank you.
Yeah, agreed. Good job. The consideration is, you've got, you know, you've got a, you've got a public, right? You've got to think about whatever your public process is. So my, Delilah and I have been chatting about this before, but be really thoughtful about the process that you create and unintended consequences. Because I think if you sat down with Juno and asked him what they do, the way they do it today, they would tell you no. And so then we can, you know, we can talk about what some of those things are. But just be thoughtful about, about your public process, what the right way to do that is.
So the team here has pretty much summarized what I was going to say. But yeah, great summary there, Delilah. I would caution against wish list, and that was what Robert's alluding to, right? There are definitely parameters on here. I think everyone on both sides here understand that. So absolutely working together, identifying those projects. There's projects today that we can all agree on, right? But it's finding out, just getting that process in place, and we're all happy to do that. So I think you're alluding also to the fact that we have to, in that agreement, commit to regular meetings, regular partnerships involving the industry, even when we start to do CIP planning, to make sure there is a seat at the table that, whoa, 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 you know, we're making good investments whenever we do that.
Yeah, thank you. Just take a moment to maybe share because we have this unique forum together that we haven't really previously had to somewhat outline what does exist in Juno. They, which just at a high level, there are geographic zones that exist that were agreed between the city and Clea, where within the waterfront zone, those projects directly related to ships, they don't, they're approved. They're, we're saying yes to those types of projects, right? So as far as you could say, getting permission or running it past us, that's something we've agreed to ahead of time. And then there is another zone further back that we want to discuss that with you. We're not saying no, but it's not a, it's not an automatic yes, we'll agree like that. Because we want to have a discussion since it's outside of the immediate area of that. And then there's another area further back that essentially is, no, we can still talk about it, but that falls outside of the scope of the purpose of those funds. So something to keep in mind, kind of as we go to develop this. Again, Ketchikan solution may look different than the Juno solution. It will. But I think having an idea of how we want to approach this to categorize and bucket projects that allows an efficient evaluation process, whereas we said, not coming at it from a public wish list perspective, but a very thoughtful approach to the funds are dedicated to, you know, the service of the vessel. What does that look like? It's cathodic protection, it's the peers, those types of discussions that we can have a lot more efficiently by categorizing those ahead of time. And I would just say, this is, this is a great step in that process. I would imagine, you know, in the next year, we'll have more of these meetings than will be required once we get this process set up. So let's make those discussions happen in a more rapid form to get to this type of agreement and alignment. And then as we go forward, it's essentially, today, we meet once a year to go over projects that are put forward by Juno. We have a dialogue about that, we come back to it. So that's something also that you can consider as the approach for Ketchikan.
Yeah, I was kind of picking up on that theme, just would, maybe, Delilah, you can recommend kind of an annual calendar so that we can get, because I think, I think it would be good for us to meet in person when we can. Once a year, twice a year, we're all up here during the summer, for the most part, on different cadences. But you get in a room with people, relationships always get better. So that'd be my personal bias. And in terms of getting to an agreement, I think we can propose a timeline on that. And we should get after it. So, you know how these meetings are, everybody has a lot of good stuff in the room. You walk out and then you get consumed by all the other things in life. And I think we've stumbled into that trap before here in Ketchikan. And so to avoid that, let's put forward a more aggressive timeline and get after it.
I think it, you know, just again, based on the three-hour meeting, our big goals are going to be this agreement, whatever it may be. Meeting immediately to talk about operational changes related to the thrusters and then shore power. Those are like the three big items. If I missed anything, let me know. That's the projects, yeah. We'll work on the projects. Yeah, yeah. I'm including that with the agreement.
Mr. Yes. Mr. Yes? So just to clarify, we all agree a whale sculpture would be in the green light, right?
Too soon.
It's actually on the dock, yes. Okay. Yes, great, please. Like I say, I can't see you through, because there's generally these giant pink things walking.
I'm just going to put some food for thought out there, too. I think everybody's talked about a really great path forward. One thing that I might recommend, once we get maybe into this a little bit more, is always reserving a little time for emerging issues on the agenda when we do get together. I've had a lot of my colleagues say, boy, it's a lot harder now than it was pre-pandemic in terms of the industry. And we're just seeing so many rapid changes and things coming at us that are being implemented in Europe that we think, you know, at some point in time are going to come our way or international type regulations that are going to have impact. or, or international type regulations that are going to have impacts into our business here in Alaska. So, reserving a little time for us to do some sharing on that front as we see things coming, that even if it might be five, 10 years down the road, would be really beneficial for you to hear about and understand as you're watching the same space evolve. So, just offer that up for an idea on a future agenda.
Let's go ahead.
Yeah, Wendy, what are those emerging things that we need to talk about? Because I think the mayor just gave you the okay.
Yes.
Putting me on the spot. No, carbon disclosure laws are some things we're really seeing hit in Calif. I, I cover California and Seattle, it's in Canada, so up and down the West Coast, similar to, to Robert and Preston. And Sandy, I think, covers the whole globe. So, you know, when I, when I talk about, Robert mentioned fit for 55 and, and what's happening there in terms of the requirements coming down the pike in, in the carbon space. You've got the, the shore power. We talked about that as an issue where we're seeing the requirements here on the West Coast that are, are just going to keep climbing up the West Coast. We're, we're seeing a lot of marine protection type of regulations, whales slow down type speeds that could really also impact itineraries in Alaska if you have to slow down so much and you can't make certain places on time. So, those are the types of things that, you know, taken in isolation may not seem like a big deal, or they might seem like a really great idea. And then, when we start adding it all up, how does it, you know, have that effect into Alaska? So, those were, are a few things I would mention. I don't know, we've got a lot of folks from the industry here. What are some other things you guys might highlight?
Looking at me. I think at some point, yeah, that's right. It might be worth in the recession briefing you all on Green Corridor. I think that's something people hear about, but don't really know what, what that means. And there's a big body of work going on under that effort. It's pretty, well, it's about the Pacific Northwest to Alaska shipping corridor, so.
Webinar.
Webinar. Yeah.
We can get that information out of a webinar.
May 2nd, there's a webinar on the Green Corridor, and we'll make sure that you all have the invite, and, and it's open to as many people as possible. But Renee or Arleny, if you could get, if you can get that information out, that'd be great.
That's a good one. And what was referenced in terms of speeds, I mean, that's, that's the most pertinent thing to Catch Can. You've probably seen the port calls get shorter here, and that's a result of, you know, our need to decarbonize and, and well, speed restrictions. And on the flip side, it's in Victoria, we have very late arrivals and very short port calls there as well. And I don't think sometimes all those dots are connected. People, why, why do the ships all come in at the same time? Or why do they do, why do they leave at 1:00, 2:00 in the afternoon, 1:00 in the afternoon? And I think we can probably help provide some more color behind why those things are the way they are and would be maybe useful to the broader community and other stakeholders here.
Yeah, I think those are, those are good ones. That's just happening here in, in, in our own backyard. And then, I'm just going to add to what Wendy said. In Europe, really what's being talked about, not only in California are the package rules, but it's more important, it's getting more important in the EU in general, is to start measuring our Scope 1, Scope 2, Scope 3 emissions. And they're going to start, and, and not only do we have to measure it, but we have to provide it to anybody that takes a cruise. So, a travel agency will know what their Scope 1, Scope 2, Scope 3. And the problem is that it, it took years, I think, for the airline industry to figure out what their scope emissions was across all of the different organizations. Because for as many cruise lines as we have, I'm going to just pick on Robert, that maybe two of your cruise lines don't even want to measure it the same way between themselves. I mean, it's just, it's just such a dialogue. And the next thing is fuels. What is the future fuel? That is just such, and who's going to produce it when nobody will know what it, you know, nobody is ordering it yet? Who's going to, what's going to go forward? It's battery storage. It's all, all of these things, and how deep we go into the supply chain to, 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 to do emissions and just getting enough. But what we see, you know, unfortunately, is that every, every session that we have for Parliament, the decisions aren't made, and then they're printed to the next year. And now, we have a new, we have a new parliamentary commission for next year, and they're starting kind of on a playing field that they probably started on a year ago, because these discussions are so complex. And so, that's really, really one of the key issues.
Maybe one more, a throw in the room, which is obvious, but we haven't even really talked about it. But there is this anti-cruise movement going global, and we've seen it play out a bit here in Alaska. And as an Alaskan who lives in this state and has seen a lot of changes to the industries that used to fund our government and our economy, and how that has shifted. And now, I'm even concerned about the fishing industry and some of the stresses we're seeing there. And I, I see tourism, and I see that bright spot of an industry that's growing and, and doing a lot of good things. It's created some stresses in the system, but I don't think we can afford to make wrong decisions about, you know, the future of, of tourism in our state right now, given that so many communities, not just in Southeast, but throughout the state, rely on it quite a bit. So, that's an emerging issue hitting us right now, and we're seeing, you know, just a lot of stuff at play. So, I guess that's a, a way for me to be able to then to bring it back, that having these kind of conversations where we're sitting down, we're working through some tough issues, developing some frameworks, it keeps us all talking. And, and in a place where we're trying to do more of a front-end proactive management as, as opposed to the reactive type mode that I think we can easily get into. So, thank you for putting this together.
I guess we've reached the point now of attendee comments. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I, I just a bit of comments, it's less a question than just putting something on the table, especially for the industry representatives who are here. And it was kind of sparked by something Wendy said earlier, when we were talking about engagement with the community. And you mentioned education, and we're, we're really lucky here to have a strong, robust maritime program at the University of Alaska Southeast Catch Can campus. We also have a small but stubborn maritime program at the high school. And opportunities for students in either program to either visit your ships, talk with your crews, I think would be excellent for our community, and might be good, good job recruitment on, on your end. So, if there are any opportunities to build relationships in that respect, I think it would benefit everybody.
That's great for us to know.
As we mentioned before, let us help the local communities, and, you know, certainly encourage that to happen here as well.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And also with the arts community, too. If you wanted some of your musicians to come off and maybe do something with the local musicians, or do some kind of a fundraiser or something, that, that would be a, a great PR.
So, let's go around the table one more time. Mr. Minister. Final comments.
Well, not final comments. No, yeah, just thank you for the invitation to come in person. As I said earlier, I think we're always better when we sit, sit in the room together and get to know each other better. And I think it's been a very productive conversation. You've all been very clear about what's on your mind and what your priorities are. Thank you to Delilah for doing a great job of kind of proctoring this and synthesizing the discussion into some action items, and really look forward to making some progress with you.
I'll forget otherwise, so I better jump toes in.
Now, just echoing Robert's statements, thank you again for the opportunity to sit here with you guys. I mean, this is, we, at least for me, I think it's been a really productive three hours. And it's, you know, again, it's good to get. No, it's, it's been great, and we really appreciate it. We're looking forward to continuing the dialogue, continuing the partnership, and putting these, putting these words into action.
Councilor Laura. Thank you, Your Honor. Just want to thank everybody, especially from the industry, for taking the time to come to town and meet with us today, and looking forward to some fruitful outcomes.
Renee? Yes, thank you for having us. I think, you know, we, we tend to listen to most of your meetings. We tend to listen to all the city council and assembly meetings across the state. Lainey and I live really exciting evening lives. But, you know, when you, when, when we come up or you have a question, we're happy to call in. We're happy to be, we want to be a resource, we want to be part of the conversation. And so, when those moments arise, even if we can't get on a plane, just let us know. I think we're happy to, we're happy to speak to the issues and the questions that you have anytime. So, thank you.
We, we'd just like to go. We're not in the room, he's going to gremble about you.
It's true.
Councilor Lainey.
Well, on that note, I think that speaks volumes to how we need to foster our relationship. And I'm, I'm really happy that you guys took the time to come up here. I've learned a lot. I think we have a lot of homework, and I look forward to us moving forward.
Great comments. Thank you so much for putting this together. I am in frequent contact with Lori, and really appreciate the role that you've been tasked with, kind of defining as you're coming into this. It's a pretty heavy lift to do, and we've, we've had a great relationship in Juno with the tourism manager there. It's a needed position, and it's just a really great liaison between Delilah and us and, and Mr. Mayor, the council here. But something that Wendy said, emerging issues, I would really encourage you to, that, like Renee said, we are happy to call into a city council meeting and be there for that. But also, if something comes up, or you have a question, or an issue that's coming up, pick up the phone and give us a call, right? And I know Lori, you really are the conduit for that, but please feel free to do that so that we don't let anything fester, and we keep this positive, forward-looking and movement going. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. This has been a very positive meeting, and I hope everything moves forward as we all would hope, or as we all will agree on anyway.
I don't have anything, just Lori, I'm going to be sending you a lot of work.
Well, thank you, everyone, for being here. And I really appreciate that you were able to just come together. And I do agree with Robert that a lot of times when you're actually in a room with someone, it makes a huge difference, because you can really have that communication. And so, thank you, everybody, for being here, and I really look forward to positive movement forward.
Well, ditto. This is about what I was going to say. And Sandy and Preston and I were talking about this a little bit before we got started this afternoon. It's just, there's such a benefit to being able to sit down together, and otherwise, we've seen these amorphous entities that have ideas about each other, but don't have any real dialogue. So, I'm glad to have the opportunity to meet in person. Thank you all.
My finger doesn't work on this thing. I already said thanks. So, I guess what I would, I would just highlight is how the season is coming fast. I think just in what, what, a couple weeks, three weeks. So, Delilah may be setting a date sooner than later for us to all reconvene and, and making sure we're keeping that moving forward, because I know it gets really busy, and it's going to happen soon. So, anyway, thanks again for having us to Catch Can.
Thanks. Apparently, her fingerprint does not work on this. Yeah, I appreciate everyone coming out. And just FYI, I'm one of those people that's going to say what I think regardless. So, you'll get what I think, period. You don't have to like it, but that's the way I am. That's how I roll. I speak from my heart. I'm a sixth generation educator. I grew up in this town, was logging fishing, and it was small businesses. I grew up in a small business, and I want what's best for this community, a lot of that. So, thanks for coming, guys. And, and so, it's average six months, right?
We're going to try.
I would like, although some of them have left, I would like to thank our gallery here for getting up and, and your positive and your enthusiastic words about the industry, because it's, you all make this work. People are on this table, but you are very important to us, too. So, I appreciate you all coming out, spending three hours of your Wednesday afternoon with us, and what you do for us every day to make this all work. You provide these amazing guest experiences and keep us coming here, because our guests want to come here. So, thank you. And I look forward to having more dialogues like this. Collaboration is key, and the more that we can do, the more successful we'll all be together.
Yeah, thanks to everybody for coming. I think one takeaway for me from all this is, obviously, we're in a bit of a hole financially, and that may or may not be to management of the past. But I think our plan, and I think everyone here is in agreement with this, is to get to the point where we get our fees at the port, through all the different fee structures at the port, to a point where we aren't in this position in the future to where we have the money to fund, at least starting with everything port-related, and then go from there on the red light, green light thing. So, I think we want to get to that point, and we, we plan to get to that point. Also, it was a bit of an educational experience for me to hear about all these plans with Europe and cruise ships that don't put off any emissions. That seems crazy to me. I don't know if they're going to put a sail or a windmill up or whatever. But I think, I, I think, you know, I, we appreciate the info on that. I think one thing I wanted to mention was, you know, we are, Catch Can is not Europe. We are sovereign Americans, and we are a state that is dependent almost totally on oil. So, while we keep in mind all of your guys' plans in Europe and other places, that's great. But we want to, we want to keep Catch Can, Catch Can and American. So, thank you to everyone.
Yeah, thank you. I, I would echo what Sandy had said, and appreciate the attendance here. I, I understand this will be televised later. So, I guess to, to that audience also, we, we appreciate your engagement. And you should know that, that the council here is genuinely working here in a very productive way to, to solve a lot of these issues. So, I want to thank the council for having us, my industry colleagues, to CLIA for the work that you guys have, have put into this. I learned a lot today. And I think one of the final thoughts for me is that I would ask Mayor Kifer to, to put some, some time into is, you know, what does it look like to continue having a dialogue? Is that through Delilah? Is that in forums like this? I think we're open to, you know, these types of, of thoughts and opportunities. It's, as we've all said, it's, it's productive, you know, we're moving ahead with this. So, aside from the agreement that, you know, we will reach and we will do, how do we have a dialogue going forward to, to talk about these issues that are very dear to, to Catch Can and, and to us as an industry? Thank you.
Well, first of all, thank you to the, to the audience who patiently sat here for three hours. And thank you to all of the council members who took time and times out of their lives to be here. And thank you to all of you guys for coming. To partially answer your question, I would envision this being a regular sort of thing. Irregardless of the other processes we're talking about, I think just be, you know, a, a, as, as we're still doing those times today, you are the major local industry at this point. And that's not going to change. And we need to be open, in dialogue with you guys. And I, I agree with, so, so, sorry guys up there, but I, I agree. Screen, we're just not really, we're not really connecting. And it's too easy in the mother world, so, but I think physically being here. And plus, from where you're at, standpoint, the fact that you're all here says something important to the community from your industry. You know, that's, that's a real important statement that you're making. But that's important to get out to the public, that you guys take time's out of your lives to come here. You know, and time in the season, to be honest, you guys got a lot of work happening, too. And it's, it's all going to bring up, and I, I, I certainly do appreciate that. So, I, I would certainly anticipate when, at least once a year, maybe twice a year, the schools, that we could have this sort of, sort of get together to, to cover, cover things. And also, covering these areas, so, yes, you know, it's, it's good for the opportunity for us to hear from you, what's coming down the pike. It's a real good, good thing, too, because, you know, we, we, we all read the magazines, newspapers, the shipping list and that. We, we all, we all go, some of us like, pretend we know something that's going on out, out in the real world. But the reality is, you guys are the experts. And so, I think we can do best, you know, before it shows up suddenly on the doorstep, so it's a good thing. And with that, we'll do this again. It's good to act awesome, it's good to actually have some very specifics, particularly when it regards to, to a long-term agreement, because that's where we got to go. We need to have that in the next five, six months or whatever, and just get that, get back to you in care. Thank you.